Been in power till at least 2030, but he has been pulling the levers for over a couple decades. Just remind us.
You know, that's right. Putin essentially served out two terms initially in Russia, then passed the reins and served as prime minister, and then came back into the presidency. So he's basically been sort of following the constitutional rules. That changed in 2020 when he announced amendments to the Constitution. It was done through a referendum here, but one that he controlled. And what it did is it did something very interesting. It nullified his term count, which means he can stay in power until 2036 should he choose to.
NPR international correspondent Charles Mainz in Moscow covering a lot going on there. Charles, thank you.
Thank you.
You're listening to Here and Now.
And you're listening on Radio IQ, your news and information station where we are supported by our listeners. And during Here and Now today, we're raising money, the money that brings you the programs you listen to on Radio IQ, programs like Here and Now. We're asking you to give to Radio IQ because listener support is what matters. Over 60% 65% of our operating budget comes directly from voluntary contributions from our listeners, and that support matters a great deal. And if you could consider giving $10, $20, or $30 a month, that investment is going to turn into more of the stories and conversations that matter to you, like the ones we are hearing today on Here and Now. You can give at radioiq.org, or you can give us a call at 800-856-8900. I'm Luke Currie, happy to be in with you this afternoon.
The 2:00 PM March 18th City Council meeting is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Mr. Priti?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Volison?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. Honorable Mr. President, this afternoon, our invocation will be delivered by the Reverend Amy Hodge, pastor of the Mount Zion AME Church. And following her invocation, I will lead you in a pledge of allegiance. If you please stand. You can't hear me? Give me a momentary pause. I'm trying to make sure my mics are on.
You can hear now.
And also, before your invocation, I'd like for us to have a moment of silence in the memory of John Francis Jr., who passed away on February 3rd, and he served as a representative, the city's representative on the Virginia Western Community College Local Advisory Board. He served since 2018, and he was the chairman of the advisory board. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, Pastor Hodge.
To Mayor Sherman Lee, members of the Roanoke City Council, administrative personnel, and to all those who have assembled themselves today, good afternoon. Philippians 4:6 and 7 says, "Be anxious for nothing, but in everything by prayer and supplication with thanksgiving let your request be made known unto God; and the peace of God, which passes all understanding, shall guard your hearts and thoughts in Christ Jesus." Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we gather before you today with thanksgiving in our hearts, and we are humbled by the challenges and opportunities that lie before our city. We come especially mindful of the strong emotions surrounding environmental justice. We acknowledge the deep passion for protecting our land, ensuring a healthy future for all. We also recognize the complexities of finding solutions that addresses everyone's needs. Grant us, oh God, the wisdom to listen with open hearts and minds. Guide our leaders with discernment as they navigate these difficult issues. Fill them with a spirit of respect and cooperation so that diverse perspectives can be heard and valued. Light a path towards compromise where common ground can be found and solutions can be reached for the betterment of our entire community. May your peace, which transcends all understanding, settle upon our mayor, our city council, and guide them in their deliberations, and may the peace of God, which surpasses all understanding, guard all of our hearts and all of our thoughts in Christ Jesus. Bless our city of Roanoke with unity and a renewed sense of a shared purpose. In the matchless, marvelous, miraculous name of your Son and our Savior, we do pray. And the people said, amen. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Hodge, for the fervent prayer. All right. Please note that council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. Announcements for today. The Council of Roanoke is seeking applications for various boards, various vacancies on council appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. Please access the city's webpage at www.roanokeva.gov to complete an online application. And we encourage all of our citizens to apply or make applications for these boards if you want to serve. We're looking for those citizens who are willing to come in and come up and work with us as we govern this seven-time all-American city. So we welcome the applications, and the process is very easy. All you need to do is fill out an application, contact the clerk's office, or go to the city's website, and they'll give you directions to do that. So we encourage you to step forward and serve. Item number two is presentations and acknowledgements. We have none. And item number three is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. And city council sets this time as a priority for you, the citizens, to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And I'm going to ask our clerk, Ms. McCord, do we have any assistance signed?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Can you call in an order?
Five speakers, and we have the first speaker as Chris Kraft.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, members of council. I'm here on behalf of the Wildwood Civic League, which two months ago I found out from the state of Virginia that a quarter of the city of Roanoke does not exist anymore. They said that the city has almost non-functioning, which isn't incorrect. And I've tried to reach neighborhood services, no one will return phone calls. So we need to get this worked out. The second item I'm here for is, Ms. Moon will probably smile when I say this, I'm here because I think that that budget that y'all want to do, taking money away from our kids in the schools, is stupid. Mrs. White is trying hard to recruit these excellent teachers to give these kids a quality education and good structured buildings. And if the money goes bye-bye, the teachers will start going bye-bye, and education and SOL scores will start dropping. So you need to consider the kids. And the third one, I don't know who was on council when I was appointed to the Civic Center Commission, but I'm loving it. But I think we need to think about allowing the gun shows to return. The gun shows brought in, I think I was told, over $125,000 each year. And they have to go back every year and ask for more money, more money. They didn't have to do that as bad when the gun shows were at the Civic Center. We need the Civic Center to operate in the black, not in the red. And I think we can do that in a reasonable way, accommodate the gun owners, let them have their show, and accommodate the new city law. We need to work together and make a resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Kraft.
Our next speaker is Deborah Carter.
Good afternoon. That was quick. I wasn't expecting that. I want to come here and talk about Lake Run Creek. The headwaters of Lake Run are in Roanoke County, and the stream flows northwest and southeast along 581. It drains the Roanoke Regional Airport, Valley View Mall, and Evan Springs, and ends at the confluence of Trout Run and downtown Roanoke. Lake Run Creek in Roanoke VA is a natural spring, stream, and has been channelized and enclosed in underground sewer. Lake Run is the headwater sub watershed of Tinker Creek. Tinker Creek is a major tributary of the Roanoke River, eventually converging in the Dan and Bannister River and terminating in the Abomar Sound of North Carolina. Evan Springs is designated as a freshwater emergent wetland by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. All waters, including wetlands, are designated for following uses: recreational uses, swimming, boating, propagation and growth of a balanced indigenous population of aquatic life, including game fish, which might reasonably be expected to inhabit them, wildlife, and the production of edible and marketable natural resources, fish and shellfish. All state waters, including wetlands, shall be free from substances attributed to sewage, industrial waste, and other waste in concentrations, amounts, or combinations which contravene established standards or interfere directly or indirectly with designated uses of such water which are harmful to human, animal, plant, and aquatic life. In the Lake Run Watershed Master Plan that was revised in 2017, it says in combination, "These factors suggest that Evan Springs area should be prioritized for preservation and riparian buffering as such large quantities of forested riparian open space are rare in urban areas. And the economic and ecological benefit of preservation is likely to outweigh the cost of restoration and flood mitigation if this land is developed." Lake Run Creek total maximum daily low cleanup is estimated at $47 million over the next 20 years. As of right now, only 1.5 million has been put into the restoration of Lake Run Creek. At the regional airport, $681,000. Highland farms, $405,000. Washington Park restoration, $300,000.
Our next speaker is Dwayne Howard.
Good afternoon. First, I want to respond real quickly to Mr. Kraft's comments. This gun issue is so out of control. If you get the paper, I believe it was Sunday's paper, there was an astounding, five pages, five pages of nothing but showing all the guns, each individual gun that you can buy, the rifles, the assault, five pages. The gun issue is out of control. I'm not quite sure what Mr. Kraft was proposing, but it sounded to me like it would be a very negative thing. I'm here to speak initially on the zoning proposal. I went to your planning commission meeting. Your planning department has hundreds of hours, probably thousands, to sell this plan. They do an excellent job, so good that if I was one of them, I'd vote for the plan. A citizen only has three minutes to stand before you. If enough citizens knew of this zoning change, this chamber would be standing room only, as it has in the past when I have vehemently opposed or proposed an issue for this city and was dragged out of city council by the police on the stadium. Your planning department brags on how much they've done to reach the public. They brag to you how much they have reached out to the neighborhood groups. What neighborhood groups? COVID wiped out so many of them. Your citizen of the year allowed my Southeast Action Forum to dissolve after 38 years. I was appointed or nominated as president emeritus of the Southeast Action Forum. I speak for all those that have gone before me. I knew all of them, and if they were alive today, I knew if they were alive today or knew of this proposed zoning change, they would be standing here before you. The good people who come before you to support this simply don't understand or grasp all the negative things concerning this change that will wipe out Roanoke as a good place to live. Let me also, in closing, thank the city for the great St. Patrick's Day parade. It was really one of the better parades the city has put on. The only negative problem was, with literally thousands of people on the street in front of the Market Building, the city opened the road to traffic. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Mark Hostetter.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Mark Hostetter, 544 Day Avenue. I've sent everybody an email last week, but I came up with a little bit more information, and I do want to say thank you to the person that responded back to me. I've asked on there before how many people have attended the workshops as well as the community meetings, and is that a good ratio that represents the neighborhoods and the residents for this proposal? How was it advertised? With all the individual neighborhood plans, in the past, having a blanket, one-size-fit-all plan does not work for all neighborhoods. I went through and I found a website, and it's about Neighborhood Scout. And they say they use a new and unique way of matching people with the best neighborhoods for them and their families. This approach uses the largest database of neighborhood statistics and characteristics ever created and converts into an accurate neighborhood profile, matching customized to the needs of individuals. They actually have on here that Old Southwest has an 11.9% vacancy rate, but it also says that we have an 86.1% of the real estate in the Old Southwest neighborhood is occupied by renters. 86.1%. That's a lot. And Old Southwest is the highest per capita in the rental for the city. I find that appalling to begin with, and I think that with the density, how are we going to have extra schools? How are we going to have extra resources like police and fire to come to these if we have any incidents? We can't do it now, and not very clear. Some can't. Let me jump back on that. But also code enforcement. You know, I've complained and complained and complained for years. Some of you on council have seen my emails before. I've had trash piles for 500 days documented. And their response is, where is it located? That's not the issue. The issue is, it's been there for 500 days, it hasn't been seen. There's people with trash going down, picking up the recycle and the trash in the alleys, and they're not doing their job. and they're not doing their job. So I really encourage you guys to vote no, and at least for Old Southwest, and make it a neighborhood by neighborhood, or put it out on the voting and have everybody vote for it. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Frida Kafcard.
Thank you for this opportunity. The Soil and Water Conservation District Director, representing Roanoke City on the Blue Ridge Conservation Board. This was the headline back in June of 2023, "Trust Lacking in Evans Spring." So this is your last opportunity to either amend or bring back before the body to table the Evans Spring Plan for more transparency and accountability with the public, with the property owners, and with the developers. There is an important disclaimer that was in the 2013 Evans Development Plan. In quotes, "A detailed master plan will ultimately be needed before development begins and will likely be required when the property is rezoned. Development around Lake Run and the former Fairland Lake Site will entail an extensive review process. This is due to the existence of the flood plain and wetlands on the land. The state and federal agencies involved in this process include the Army Corps of Engineers, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. Much of the site analysis and engineering will take place while working through the process. The city will not approve a development plan until all required state and federal permits are secured." Okay? But two weeks ago, you all approved a development plan that does not have this disclaimer in it. And that plan, if it was developed as is, would create so much impervious, more impervious service that would cause over 70 million gallons of stormwater to flood downtown. There's good reasons why there are state and federal laws protecting wetlands, because they soak up stormwater, a million gallons per acre. That's why there's state and federal laws protecting this. So the way you all have done this, approving the development plan, like, well, the property owners would like need to apply for zoning, to rezone it, but there could be a developer, like the one that was going to develop the Chandoa Life Woodlands from out of state, that might decide to come here and do it. Well, it's a buyer beware in Virginia. You want developers to come here and invest their time and money to come up with concepts to be successful with their projects? You better have development plans, plans that are transparent and have disclaimers like this in it, so they know what they're getting into, because otherwise Roanoke will have a bad reputation where it's not worth people's time and money to go and invest here. So I'm trying to help you. Please fix this. You have the chance to do it today, 2 o'clock this meeting. Thank you.
Let me say, I got your email. I'll forward that to our city manager and to Chittam for their review.
So I did talk to the state's environmental attorney at an area meeting. You have done nothing illegal at this point, but as far as it's ethical question, and when it comes to Roanoke's reputation, it is a buyer beware state, and I think what I heard in the conversation with council was your intention was to help develop what could be developed there. And I'm concerned that what, where it is right now is not going to have that objective obtained unless you put a disclaimer or do something to fix it.
Well, we're going to take that under advisement, and I'll get back to you and respond to your email.
Thank you.
Does that conclude all of that, Speaker?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Oh, we're now going to move down to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions, discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Now, I've got a request to move one item from this consent agenda, it's item C2, which is a communication requesting that council convene a closed meeting to discuss the three upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board, expiring June 30, 2024, Pursuit Intersection 22 at 3711 Cove of Virginia as amended. So we'll remove that from the consent agenda and discuss that once we approve the agenda. There are three requests, four closed meetings. One will come from my office to discuss the three upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board, which expires June 30, 2024. And we have a-
And Ms. Mayor, that's the one that's been removed.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. It'll be considered separately.
We'll consider that one separately. Then there's a request from Councilmember White, board chair of the City Council Personnel Committee, to discuss the personnel matter, being the annual performance of the council-appointed officers. And there's also one from our city manager to discuss the possible acquisition of real estate near the intersection of Ninth Street and Rivaland Road Southeast. For discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, Pursuit Intersection 2.2-3711 Cove of Virginia as amended. I need a motion for-
And Mayor, if we could add the one request for a public hearing on Monday, April 15th, for consideration of a bond issue regarding general obligation bonds, public improvement bonds for the city, not to exceed $14 million. This is for the conference center at Hotel Roanoke. We just received notice on Friday from our bond counsel that everything's ready to go. So that's why I apologize. It came as a walk-on item.
Should I make a motion to amend the consent agenda?
Yes, to add this, please.
A motion to add this to the consent agenda. Mayor Lee, I'd also like to remove item C1. I just have a few quick amendments to make on the minutes.
Remove item C1?
Remove item C1 as well.
Okay, we'll move item C1 and C2. Are there a motion to?
I'm unclear on which ones we're removing, because I heard three different ones.
C1.
I heard C1, I heard C2. Which one was yours?
This is, it's C2. Mayor was making the, he was moving it for me. Yes, yes.
So it's just those two?
Yes, sir.
Yes, those two.
Thank you.
Do you got anything, Ms. Pritty?
So we've removed two, and we've added one, and there's a motion on the floor to amend the consent agenda to add this.
And I'll second the motion to, to adopt, to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. The second one, ma'am clerk, can you call a roll?
Yes. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pritty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the consent agenda, amended consent agenda has been approved. All right, let's look at C1.
C1.
Sorry, that one. And apologies, Mayor Lee and the rest of council. I admit I did not take the time to thoroughly read these ahead of time, but upon glance, there's at least one or two small changes that I'd like to make, and I can either attempt to make those now or if we want to table and do it later. All right, we'll power through it now. Is it, what do you prefer? Okay. When it comes to, when we, we went into closed session at 4:55 PM, and we recessed on the 5th, and then we came back at 6:04 PM, and then my understanding is we, we recessed till 1:30, but I don't remember having the certification of a closed meeting then. And I went back to watch the video last night, and I wasn't sure if that occurred. My understanding was just we recessed to continue the closed meeting. And then for the 1:30 PM meeting on the 20th, I think it notes that we had a motion to go back in closed meeting for vacancies, and it notes that I voted yes, but I wasn't here when we started at 1:30 PM.
Yes, we've corrected that now.
So we've corrected that, but then, so if that can be reflected as a correction, and then I did arrive before they voted, but actually had stepped out before the vote occurred. So it says abstained, and I'd rather just say that I wasn't present.
Okay, we can do that. We can do that. I do have those notes in my notes, so.
But we'll update and reflect those.
We'll update those.
I just wanted to make sure that those got caught before these get approved, and otherwise that they look correct as they've been submitted.
Okay. Is that, it's been noted, and is that all we need to do?
Yes, that's all, yes.
Thank you.
What about the certification for closed meeting?
I thought we, I thought we recessed, and then we didn't, we didn't certify it until after we got out.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think we're good there.
Okay.
But we will need a first and a second on C1.
Yes.
Yeah. Move the minutes as amended.
Second.
All right. We need to call a roll on that.
Yes, sir, we do.
All right.
All right, Ms. Moon.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pritty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you, and that's been.
And we will need a first and a second on C2.
Yes.
And that roll call, I believe, Councilmember Moon will have the statement.
Yes, thank you. With, in connection with the C2, which is the communication from Mayor Sherman P. Lee Sr., requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the three upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board, I would ask that this be entered into the record, a statement of conflict of interest, and it states that I, Stephanie Moon Reynolds, state that I have a personal interest in agenda item C2 regarding the communication read into the record, because one of the applicants currently is working on my mayor campaign for 2024, and therefore, in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112, I will refrain from participation in this matter, and I ask that the city clerk accept this statement, and ask that it be made part of the minutes of this meeting. Thank you. And at that point, I would move that, that the communication from Mayor Sherman P. Lee requesting a closed meeting be adopted.
Seconded.
All right. Ma'am clerk, can you call a roll on that?
Yes. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pritty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. Okay. Any other changes we need to make? All right, gee. So did we, do we need to prove the, we proved the consent agenda?
Yes, we're going to go.
Thank you. All right, let's go down to the regular agenda now. We have no public hearing this afternoon. And petitions and communications. Item number one is an update by Good Samaritan Hospice on the building construct, building construction project over on Cove Road. Aaron Hush, chief executive officer, and Scotty Hartman, vice president of Bennett Development, Good Samaritan Hospice are the spokespersons, and this is sponsored by Vice Mayor Cobb and Councilmember Moon Reynolds. I'll call on Mr. Hush for a presentation, which we allow in 10 minutes. Mr. Hush.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for having us. We just want to give a quick update on the, the project that we're doing. I know a few people have joined us at the site and toured it, so we thank you for that time and your support, but we're really excited about. Oh, this is bad that I can't see that far. But I'll, I'll click this way. But, but very excited about what we're able to do inside the city and over on Cove Road. So for no, for those of you who may not know where we are, we will, at 4751 Cove Road, which is very close to the intersection of Peters Creek and Cove. And if you remember, I guess about a year and a half ago, we were able to rezone this land and start the construction of what we are calling the Good Samaritan Center for Caring. So we're relocating our home care and administrative office there, but we're also expanding to offer a freestanding hospice inpatient facility. So it really will be the first of its kind in southwest Virginia. It's also, I'd say, 35 years in the making for Good Sam. It has always been a part of our dream as the only community-based nonprofit hospice here to have inpatient beds and to have a hospice house. So we're excited for that. I'll just show you a couple of pictures as we get, as we're in construction. This is Sue Ranson on this side, who was our founder. Some of you may know Sue or remember Sue, but she's now on the board. But a group of our employees and leadership team, as well as board members, met up there, and we actually walked around the building, as you can see, and we wrote blessings on the wall. Blessings to those patients and families that we will serve, but also our staff. If you may know, but this is a 30,000 square foot building, very large building, go to the next one. There we go. So you can just sort of see, we, we are designing this facility, I mean, our primary purpose in when we built this building was to serve patients in a number of reasons that are on the end of, on end-of-life's journey. So we'll offer general inpatient care, which is our highest level of hospice care. I like to describe the building as, is really like a hospice hospital. So we'll be taking hospice-appropriate patients, we'll have the highest level of care, general inpatient, we'll have some residential care, and we'll also offer respite care for families, up to five days, they can send their loved one there to get a break, which is often needed. So as you can see just from these pictures, we're really making a lot of progress. We are hoping to get the temporary certificate of occupancy, hopefully by the end of this week. And we're going to relocate our administrative and home care services there, hopefully by next Monday or Tuesday. So we're excited about that. We're currently in a complete remote status, because everything is out of our other building, but we're, but we've had great, I think, great progress on the, and so our goal will be there to be, hopefully be there next week, but we will not open the hospice house until August. Our goal right now is, is really August 1st to open the hospice house. We have to go through the whole survey process, the building has to be complete. We've had some great partners, SFCS, as well as GNH Construction. Hopefully, the hospice house will be finished by the end of next month, and then we'll start application for survey so we can get our license. And we're also continuing our capital campaign, so we're proud. Our capital campaign goal was 5 million, we're currently sitting at 3.2. So hopefully, over the next six or seven months, we're able to raise the additional 1.8 million to help us fund the hospice house side of this facility, so. I did want to, go ahead to the next one. This is a couple of pictures just inside the building. You can see that we have custom cabinets that are built in, all the patient rooms are private. That's actually a seating area, but also turns into a bed for, for families to sleep at night, that's more comfortable than a chair, right, sitting beside there. But we've really taken a lot of time to decide, design this facility to meet the needs of patients and their families at the end of life. So I hope everybody can, can stop by and see it. If you'll go to that next slide, just a quick announcement. We are doing a ribbon cutting, which will be Friday, June 7th, at 10:00 AM, and we'll work with, with the city. We're proud to have this in the city. You know, one of our goals when we were looking for land is, we really wanted to be in the city, and so we're really thankful. We're, we're just maybe a stone, stone throw away from the county, but we're very close to Peters Creek and 581 and 81, and want to make, wanted to make this facility accessible to everyone that we serve, and we serve portions of 15 counties across southwest Virginia, so. So thank you for your support. We hope that everybody can join us on June 7th for a ribbon cutting and also a building dedication.
Thank you. As it is, I'm practically, so I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Moon Reynolds if they have any questions or thoughts or comments they want to make.
I'm going to go first.
Okay. Thank you. Come on back up, Scotty. I don't have a question, I just have more of a comment, and, and that is really to thank you all, and just for the public. I did, I was one of the who had the privilege of touring the first phase of your exceptional project, and I was so impressed that it looked more than just for a- project, and I was so impressed that it looked more than just for a hospices. It looked just for the patient care. And the dedication to that inpatient care is, was very evident, and I do commend you on that, the time and the resources that you all were putting in that. And also, from the administrative side, just watching you talk about what all was going to be put in place for the patient care. I also wish to express my heartfelt gratitude to Scotty Hartman and the administration for extending that invitation to me. Thank you. I want to also emphasize that Good Samaritan Hospice's mission and vision statements, which you didn't go over, that it reflects their, your unwavering comp, commitment to providing top-tier services for your patients, and that Good Sam's history and culture are deeply entwined with the community members who founded this hospices. Shaping it into the beacon of excellence it stands as today. Amidst the complexities of healthcare landscape, your mission remains steadfast to ensuring that every moment of the, your patients' lives is filled with comfort and dignity, and which is very vitally important. And I also want to say that it is known that you strive not only to facilitate peaceful, pain-free transitions, but also to enrich the lives until the, enrich their lives until the very end. In closing, I do want to bring attention to the remarkable progress that you have achieved and the profound impact this facility will have on providing inpatient care. And again, thankful to this council for repealing the certain profit conditions on this property and approving the rezoning that was subject to the development plan that was submitted by your facility, and that is to serve not just the Roanoke Valley, but also extend its reach far beyond. So again, thank you for coming to share, and I do look forward to your ribbon cutting on June 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. May I share?
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron and Scotty, thank you so much for being here. It's exciting to see this nearing completion. A number of years ago, I had the opportunity to be with a parishioner of mine who had lived alone during his life. He was living with AIDS. He had no family. They had all pretty much kicked him to the curb. So his family of choice gathered with him in a hospice house and provided care along with the staff of that hospice house. And it was the first time I had seen the power of this kind of facility. It's, it's so needed for people who don't have family, or for families who want to bring their loved one to a place that they also can be with them. And I love your philosophy and your mission, that anyone who is a family to that person is welcome to be there, and that is so absolutely critical. I also get to work with Good Samaritan Hospice as a chaplain, and I see the tenderness and knowledge and wisdom that, and compassion that you share with families and loved ones at their, at their bedside at end of life. And while the residents might thank you while they're still with us, it's the family members that I know thank you because of that support you provide even after that loved one is gone. So I'm so glad that we have Good Samaritan Hospice and, and so many great hospices in the community, but I'm just thrilled that you all are bringing this care center, Center for Caring and the hospice inpatient facility to us. You may have mentioned this, but what will your capacity be? How many, how many units will you have for inpatient care?
So it's a 16-bed facility, which is the maximum allowable in the state of Virginia in, in, in hospice care.
Okay.
Which is interesting, right?
Yeah, we might want to talk about that later.
Yeah, we can talk about that later, but, but at one location.
Okay.
16 beds is the maximum, and that's why we chose the 16.
Okay. Well, thank you, and it's in a beautiful setting, too. Well, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have, I just wanted to say thank you to Aaron. I remember when you and Betsy came, met with me in my office, I think I was Vice Mayor at the time, and you said you are determined to bring this facility to Roanoke City, and you did, because you could have gone anywhere.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to let you know that I'm truly grateful that you all were persistent enough to have this facility here in Roanoke City. And it will benefit the surrounding area, but we do appreciate having it here in Roanoke City. I just wanted to say thank you, and I remember that conversation well.
Yeah, well, thank you, and, and thanks to the city for being kind to nonprofit organizations, whereas some of the other surrounding areas are not as kind. So thank you to the city. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you all. We're now down to item number seven, which is a report of city officers and commissary city manager. I'm going to recognize the city manager now for the briefing this afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have three briefings this afternoon. The, the first, you may recall that around this time last year, we brought to you what was the first in terms of how we intend on spending the settlement funds from the opioid settlement, and we had indicated at that time that we would continue to operate under kind of a five-year plan, and of course, every year, we have to add additional years to that plan. So that'll be our first briefing, is kind of updating you on, on that item. The second briefing will be the monthly budget report for February, and then the third briefing is a combination of a briefing that the Regional Commission has asked to provide on their annual report, combined with a briefing that you all had requested, which was an overview of the SMART scale process and the projects that we have in place under SMART scale. So we've got those three, three briefings that we'll go through. Wayne will walk you through the first one, then we'll turn it over to Brent for the second, and then Jeremy and Dwayne will be doing the third briefings. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. So you may recall, last year about this time, a couple of months later, we approved a five-year plan for the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority funds that the city received and was asking for. I'm going to give a little bit of update on that this year as we update that five-year plan, talk about what was approved last year, what we hope to get approved this year, and how we move forward. So just a little bit of background. The Opioid Abatement Authority was established back in 2021 as an independent entity to help us handle these financial funds that come from settlements from different companies related to the opioid crisis that we had in our country. You can see here on this chart, sort of an update of where some of the funds have come from thus far. You have this in your packet, I won't go through it, but just to show you that there's an array of different entities that have had to make settlements into the program. This is all across the country, and the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority helps us handle those allotments given to Virginia and its localities. There are other on the way. Actually, you can see it here as we look at the list of national opioid settlements and bankruptcies. Many have been finalized, several are pending, and we have some that have been announced. So that's kind of a moving target. So I show that to show you that we are continuing to get settlements that come and go. So as we go in subsequent years, we expect to have even more funds that'll flow into this pot of money. Last year, we did adopt the gold standard, and that was requested by the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority to make sure that we use our funds in the most appropriate ways that we can to meet the needs of all the settlements. All the settlements have slightly different criteria, and so the Virginia OAA set, created this gold standard under which we would meet all the requirements of all the different settlements by following that main criteria. So here's a look at how some of that funding is distributed within Virginia. We received, if you look at that blue 30% cut of the pie, those are the direct distributions that localities like us at City Roanoke receive directly, and then the big chunk, the 55% are what the Opioid Abatement Authority receives and holds on to and distributes, and then some goes directly towards the state. Of the 55% chunk, the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority, they distribute it in different ways. There's a certain allotment for us as a locality that we can ask them for those funds, and they will send those on to us, and there are other funds that can be used for a cooperative grant application, which I'll talk to in a little bit, where we can partner with other localities and ask for funding for a particular project. And then, of course, as you can see, there's also a certain amount that goes to state agencies, and then they have an unrestricted amount, which I think up until this point, they've been using for planning grants, and they may use that differently going forward. So again, this sort of shows you what I was just talking about, where we have a certain amount that is allotted to us as an individual locality, a certain amount, 35% of that fund, funding can go towards cooperative grants, and then state agencies, and then some discretionary funding. So as we look at our funding now, this is for the city of Roanoke. Again, it shows how this funding is long-term in a sense, in that we have funding allocations out to 2039, but it does come in, in, in bits and, bits and starts, if you will. So we have a lot of funding upfront, and then it's sort of, is smaller amounts as we go forward, and then we expect even more funding to come into play later. So one of the things we wanted to do with this process was create a way where we could even the dollar amounts out so that we can have a continual round of funding, and not spend all the funding we had in the first year and then be down to smaller amounts in subsequent years. So we kind of smoothed it out, and that's what we did with our last five-year plan, which I won't go through in detail because I'm going to quickly move on to our next five-year plan and sort of show you some of the things that have changed. I'll talk about these all individually as we go forward, but you can see, just looking at this chart that shows some of the changes we've made, we've primarily added some new matches for cooperative grants, as we do have some more cooperative grants that we are asking for. We adjusted, we had two items that were sort of placeholders last year. We didn't have actual projects, but we thought we might have some planning grants requests going forward. Well, it turns out, we've actually went ahead and started doing actual projects instead of the planning grants for those, and I'll talk about that in a moment. So let me jump in, and again, this does take our budget out to fiscal year 2029. However, the way the budget has worked out, with these dollar amounts, we actually spend our current allotment by 2028. But again, we do expect there are more settlements coming down now, and so we do expect to get more direct distributions and also more that we are eligible for through the OAA for our individual allotment. All right, so this is the fun part. What are we actually trying to fund and have been funding so far with these funds? So I think the biggest advantage we had in going into this project was that we already had a relationship with the collective response. The Regional Commission has housed the collective response. We have used ARPA money the last couple of years to help support them and help them grow. So when we came into this, we really had a head start with an idea of who our partners were as we look at this realm of opioid abuse disorder, and who we could call on to help us create projects. So we kind of had that in place. And so as we go forward, we hope to continue funding the collective response, but they helped us get to some of these projects that I'm going to talk about now. Last year, we asked and received funding to do some work for ACE awareness and training, so adverse childhood experience training. We are going to continue that as we go forward, and we hope to work in two after-school programs. So we have continued that budget item out for what we expect to be the second year of five years, so we'll continue that program. We also had money for a certified peer recovery specialist program, and this is helping people with peers, people who have gone through this situation before. As they go through recovery, it's often helpful to have a peer that helps them work through that. We created a program last year, which we have not started yet, but we're going to ask for continuing funding next year and hope to get that started so we can have a certified peer recovery specialist work within the sheriff's office, and we have opportunity to grow that program in subsequent years. Talk a little bit more about how we're going to move forward these programs in a moment. We had some programs related to harm reduction. We had funding for the purchase of a mass spectrometer and xylazine test strips so we could test drugs and know what is in them, so people know what it is that they are taking. We have a lot of issues, obviously, with overdoses with fentanyl and other harmful things like xylazine, and so we want to be able to reduce harm when we can. We did also have some money for our city EMS department, which will roll over into this next year as well, so we can continue using those funds. And then we did fund some marketing for the warm line at the Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare. This is a hotline where served or operated with peer recoveries specialists who help people who are in crisis situations while they're going through recovery. So again, back to the collective response funding, we will continue to seek funding for that cooperative grant. This was a cooperative agreement between the city and the county as we sought funding for the collective response. We also had letters of approval from really all of the localities in our region, and we hope to continue to grow that partnership as we go forward as well. One of the things that I show on here at the bottom of your screen, you can see some of the projects that we were funded with last year and that we are seeking funding next year. As we go forward to be competitive with these cooperative grants, it's really helpful to show that we have matched, that we have some skin in the game. And indeed, the projects that we applied for individually are all projects that we want to work with the collective response to help us manage. And so we are likely this next round to start rewriting how we request this funding and build that in as part of the cooperative grant with the collective response so that we can count those local dollars that we're putting towards these projects as matched towards that larger grant. Likewise, the collective response themselves are looking at their own scope of work and hoping to be more project-oriented. So as they go forth, they will be adjusting their budget, budget and scope of work as well to sort of, A, help us manage some of the projects that the city has, some of the projects the county is looking to help support, and then also help fund some projects of their own. So that's a little bit of a pivot and something slightly different than how we did it last year, but we think it'll help us be more competitive as we continue to seek funding for the collective response. And then we do have some new plans. Well, let me, this is what we actually asked for last year, and we did not actually, let me be clear, we didn't actually ask for these funds. We had it as a placeholder because we thought some projects might come around, that we might have a housing plan need to get planning funds for, that we might, we knew there was something percolating with the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court. And so those have sort of progressed, and we have sort of a, I call it recovery housing, perhaps that's the wrong term there. It's really residential treatment facility that'll replace the former Bethany Hall. We're seeking some funding to help bridge the gap in funding that they have. This is a project that is funded from a lot of different sources, so we bring a lot of funding and leverage to this, and this is a relatively small ask for the size of the project, but we're really happy to support that project. And then we have been working with the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court to get funding to fund two navigator care specialist positions. One would work primarily, primarily with the city, the other would work with Salem and Roanoke County, because again, these are cooperative grants, and in both cases here, we are partnering, like we believe we will be partnering with the county in these cooperative grants as we go forward. And so that navigator, navigator care specialist position, which I will not try to say five times fast, but the navigator cares specialist position, I will say it twice, I guess, is the goal is to help keep families together. So as families, parents come in dealing with recovery from opioid abuse disorder, we, we want to have someone that can help them make the right choices, do the things they need to do so that they can keep their family unit together and help keep kids out of foster care when we can. The next project is a cooperative grant to grow on the harm reduction. So again, I mentioned last year, we, we did some funding for supplies related to harm reduction. Now we have had an ask, and again, this is something we hope to partner with the county on, maybe other localities, to actually fund the training and staffing to help with some of this equipment that we did for harm reduction, to use these test strips for fentanyl, xylazine, and benzodiazepine, which I also won't say five times fast, and also to, to use the spectrometer to test, to again, reduce harm. And so with that, that was kind of a quick overview of what we're proposing, but I can certainly take any questions. I know I went through the beginning fast, and this is still, we are still working as we get the final partnerships together with our local. we get the final partnerships together with our localities. The goal is to apply, really the requirement is to apply for all this funding by April first. So, we have a couple of weeks to get the last bits and pieces together.
Thank you, Wayne. Let me just ask you a question. Are the surrounding counties and areas participating in the financial aspect of all this?
So, as I said, we've got a lot of partnership with Roanoke County thus far. They partnered with us last year for funding for the collective response with the navigator positions that I won't say the full name five times fast, but with that, working with the juvenile domestic court group, we have funding from Salem, Roanoke County and the city of Roanoke as well. And so, in both cases, now we will also, they will be contributing a certain amount of match as well as signing on to the cooperative grant. So, we do have some participation and we hope with some of the other cooperative grants, we're likely to partner with Roanoke County.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Wayne, thank you so much. That was very good. I just had a question about the guidelines and the parameters. Are they really strict so that you can't be flexible in the programs that you're designing for us here in this area or can you be a little bit more flexible because some of that grant money, you've got to stick to their guidelines and parameters?
Yeah, so, we, we do receive an advantage by approving that gold standard, which are, you know, some broad guidelines, I'd say, that we need to stick to as we go forth with this funding. And by doing that, we actually receive extra allotment from the Virginia OAA. I think it's, is it twenty-five percent of our allotment that they hold?
Of the initial request, twenty-five percent for adhering to the gold standard and that also ensures that we're in compliance with settlement agreements.
Right.
And that just helps, but they gave us a sweetener, twenty-five percent if we agreed to that.
To that, so, but you can tailor those programs because you've got a lot of different programs that you're trying, yeah.
Right. It's still a lot of flexibility. I mean, our main goal is to reduce harm, to help people in recovery and help deal with the situation of opioid abuse disorder and, and so we have, there's a lot of different angles to do that, you know, and so we, we're trying to address them from a lot of different angles.
I see, yeah, you've got a lot going on. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I thought I saw Ms. Chantia June.
My bad, thanks.
All right, Ms. Pretty.
I do have a few questions. I think the city attorney wants to say something. While he does, I'm going to ask one of my questions. Is this J and D R court navigator specialist that's being set up? Are we the first ones to be doing this? Is this a model that's being replicated in other parts? And if you know, who in the courthouse is leading this effort? Because I'm, I'm happy to hear that Salem, Roanoke County and Roanoke City are working together because it's all our, our district when it comes to the court system. So, it's hoping, I have another question, but if you'll answer that when you provide your remarks.
Our judges are heading this up and of course, one of the judges was a DSS attorney. So, this is a concept that has been brought up by the state, but we're the first locality to also go into this idea of if we can have the navigators ensuring that these parents are adhering to their treatment schedules, we can perhaps keep more families together and more kids together with their families. So, that's kind of where that came from and I'll have to recuse myself because I've been on that committee and we have a grants committee meeting coming up and I'm trying to, I think it's the end of April in Farmville that will probably review this application.
Well, barely, I'll finish my remarks. Well, first, I know you have to recuse yourself. Well, I'm glad that our judges are doing that and now one of our J and D R judges is now moving up to circuit court, Judge Chifone. And I know he won't say the name, but Judge Ferguson, I hope will do a great job on this at the J and D R level. I did have a question about the, where the, where it struck the xylazine test strips, money only in the first year and strikes the following years. I see lower down in the presentation that there's money to purchase those strips, but also the opioid reversal drug. And I was wondering, do, do we have enough of what that drug is for the remaining years? And then two follow-ups on that because I've been hearing that the EMS have been needing to use multiple doses in order to revive someone. So, one, making sure we have enough because they have newer reversal drugs that are larger doses, so you only need to use one. Then two, there's an issue about their expiration. So, there's a number of these kits that are being given out for free, which are wonderful, but when they don't end up being used, if they're used for so long, they do expire. And I know the abatement authority has had to consider purchasing more and I'm not sure if that's a problem that we're having at the local level. And before you answer, I'll go ahead and finish my remarks. I, I don't know what the situation was, but on St. Patrick's Day, I was mowing my lawn and one of the houses in my neighborhood, apparently there was an overdose. And I think there, there's some other factors to that situation. I don't know all the details, so I don't want to speak to them, but it just points to how important a topic this is and that we're working on in the city.
Indeed, sorry to hear that. I will say that one of the things we're doing with those two particular budget items you pointed out is trying to move away from funding supplies to a larger program. So, with harm reduction, the reason we didn't ask for subsequent funding to keep, you know, buying test strips is because that's part of the cooperative grant ask, so it's kind of bundled in to the larger project. With fire and EMS, there's potential that we may have a project in subsequent years that's part of a bigger program. And so, right now, we're just going to roll over those funds because we haven't really started spending them yet and that's really probably my fault as much as anyone else's, but we were a little late this year getting around of all our fun, all our funding from the Virginia OA and we're sort of setting up how we spend that money, which is, again, goes back to that relationship with collective response and trying to bring them in as a partner to help us manage some of these projects more directly, to help us be a little more efficient in implementing it.
So, from what I'm hearing, well, the specifics of money's moving around, but we're going to make sure we still have the supplies that we need.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Beth, ma'am?
Thank you, Wayne. Just a couple of questions. As I understand it, y'all are applying for these funds for, for the locality or the region.
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct. And so, it's, in all cases, it's an application process. Some of them are individual applications where we really kind of apply for the money that's already been set aside for us and some of that also on this budget, it's not really separated out. Some of it we already have in the bank, so we sort of blend those monies together. The bottom column with the regional projects, those are cooperative grants and that's what we call sort of the extra money, if you will. It's not money that's necessarily allocated for us, but if we go in with a good grant proposal and ask for it, we may receive it, like we did last year for the collective response.
So, is there funding coming in then that local nonprofits who are doing some of this work will be able to apply for? Is that another, the next step in the process?
Yeah, and that's where we're working with our relationship with the collective response to sort of see how that model fits within what they're doing. So, at this point, that's kind of how we've been coming up with a lot of our projects is working with the collective response to reach out to those partners, see what the need is, what projects are out there, what they propose. And I think as we go forward, we're going to work with the collective response to help formalize that a little bit so we have a regular timeframe that matches our timeframe with the Virginia OAA and so we can work that way. And we've had some discussions with my person at the county as well about also supporting that as we go forward.
On the certified peer recovery specialists, I know that we have some peer recovery specialists already through like the Bradley Free Clinic.
Correct.
Are these, are these new, are these new positions?
They would be new the way it was envisioned, yes.
And how many would there be?
So, it, it's set up to grow, but it was one to two to begin with, moving to two and then up to four, I think is what we got to with that funding.
So, up to four. And then, one of the things that I've appreciated about our peer recovery specialists is that their work is very intersectional, even though they're focusing, focusing on, you know, connecting with people who have substance misuse disorder and providing them support. They're also connecting with other entities in the, in the city, for example, the homeless assistance team.
Right.
The police department, violence prevention. So, is, is, is this part of the hoped-for goal as well that these peer recovery specialists will be aware of those intersections and, and I guess, receive some additional training on how to engage?
Absolutely, and I, I think that's where, again, the collective response hopefully helps us play a big role in that because they are tied in and, and involved with that array of services out there. I mean, as the city is as well, but we want to make sure that is communicated because that's an important thing. We do have a lot of different things that speak to this issue and we want to make sure that people are well-connected and get the services they need.
Okay. I know right now, we're in the middle of the, it only takes one fentanyl effort that the first lady has initiated with, and working with so many people here in, in Roanoke. Is there any, I don't know, and that's mostly a, a community awareness, marketing campaign to tell people stories and connect them with resources. Has, is thought being given as to how some of these funds might be able to sustain that effort beyond its, you know, to, to carry it forward? Because I, I can't recall if that was built into the, the original plan. I don't know if, Bob, if you know anything about that?
Yeah, I think they're, they have some funds to sustain that, but I, I don't know yet that they've identified a long-term funding mechanism associated with that yet. There are, and I know the question about nonprofits also, there are other state and federal grants that are also being pursued by a variety of different groups. The advantage of obviously the settlement funds is they are guaranteed funds for an extended period of time versus a lot of these other grants might be for a single year for a purpose and so on. So, you know, what we'll be doing, and, and again, to echo it, Wayne, so that's the, that's the value here in this community of the collective response is all of that's being organized through that group and so it allows us to kind of leverage dollars that are coming in and also to make sure that we're not, somebody got a grant and then that just falls off and doesn't get picked back up if it's actually having success. That's one of the reasons why when, when first lady was here, she plugged directly into the collective response so that we can make certain that those, those efforts were being leveraged with that, with that piece. And also, I just wanted to mention too, something that Councilmember Pretty mentioned, you know, all of these, all of these dollars that we received are from settlements from past damage, but just in case anybody's thinking we're, we're past this. So, last week in the region, we had, there were at least a dozen overdoses with at least two fatalities just in the last week. So, you know, it, it is certainly an issue that the entire region, really the entire southeast, but certainly the state of Virginia continues to grapple with and that's why you see so much focus on peer recovery, on recovery housing, on those things because, you know, it's, it's not just about taking care of damage done, it's also trying to prevent future damages.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask you, oh, excuse me, I'll come back to you. Those fatalities, were they in the region or were they in the city?
I know at least one of the fatalities was in the city. I don't know about the other one. The, the total number of overdoses were across the region.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I, well, that's a good question, Mayor, because I know at least last year, the overdose deaths were four times the number of gun violence homicides. And, and it's, and I imagine for a lot of reasons, it's under-reported, but, but that's the reality.
And it occurs across the entire region and, and I believe, Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe that all of the localities that surround us all have similarly benefited from these settlement funds. So, to your question, Mayor, about financial participation, all of the surrounding communities have some version of these dollars that they are, that are available for them to spend on, on programs. As far as I know, they are, we've just been fortunate to partner with Salem and Roanoke County on trying to get some of the other dollars that are coming from the state in addition to those dollars directed, directly to the localities.
The last question I have is really, it's about the harm reduction training and operations. Is that new training or ongoing training and operations and is that, I imagine that's through the collective response, but we have two harm reduction agencies in the city, the drop-in center and Virginia Harm Reduction Coalition.
Right, and it is with the Virginia Harm Reduction Coalition, I believe. And, and it is, I think it is expanded training, if not totally new training.
Okay.
It's my understanding.
Okay, I just, I, I ask that because my hope is that we can utilize both of those harm reduction programs because it just expands our reach. Yeah. Thank you. Those are all my questions, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
And we'll probably sometime, you know, toward the end of the, probably the end of the fiscal year, since it'll be two years, we'll probably have the collective response come back and give kind of an update on progress that they're making, also not just the funding piece of it.
All right, we're going to switch the money now.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon. Let me pop up the PowerPoint here. That's not it. Well, I don't see it. Well, Mr. Mayor, may go without our PowerPoint today, if that's okay. I don't, it's supposed to be loaded unless it's somewhere else.
Great, I'll check with staff.
Okay. Get up with this. There's one up here. Yes, that's just a random stab in the dark here. Apologize for that, so we will move on hopefully quickly. I'll start overall with saying the trends that we've experienced for the first eight months of the year, I think are continuing to hold, which is very good news considering the kind of volatility of our economy. We'll jump right into our overall revenue summary and I'd like to point out that this is through February, our first eight months of this year. As you see, nothing really, some of the numbers look a little odd, but we've talked about those before and I guess if I go to the very top in the yellow all the way to the right, you'll see with our overall general property taxes should be around sixty-seven percent or so, we're at forty-seven and as we said before, primarily because we're still in the collection stage of real estate as well as personal property is not due till May thirty-first. We are, I would like to point out the personal property tax number or the category, the commissioner's office is working very hard right now to get this information into the system as quickly as possible. Preliminary estimates of value show that we, we are comfortable with our budget number and we are even hopeful that we will arrive at some surplus. It'll still be several weeks before we know what the total valuation of our vehicles are at this point, but I think it's overall good news to the overall economy and how values have held, providing the, the revenues we need for our critical services. I'll just kind of pass on the rest of the general property taxes. We are about where we have been for most of those. The, the other local taxes, want to take a minute and look at, we've talked about in the past, some of those sort of maybe underperforming, we're not sure. As Mr. Cowell has mentioned to you, we will reforecast all of these revenues and I'll point out a couple that, that definitely need reforecasting as we see. I would like to point out again that we are projecting through the end of the year in all of our revenue categories, a pretty healthy surplus of revenues this year for our year in needs, for fund balance and those things as well. So, when we are reforecasting, we are going to be looking at all the revenue categories, but I'll point out a couple of those in particular that we go down. So, if you look at sales tax, that is one that we think will be reforecast. That is running slightly below our projections up to this point in time. As you see, we're about fifty percent, you add about eight percent or so to the, well, that's two months, so we're running right on, but that, the target, but that has dropped off a little bit over the last several months. And I think what that really reflects is we are in such a rebound of retail sales of after COVID with a lot of the ARPA money and care monies into the economy that we're finally sort of reaching, I believe, this sort of normal economic growth or activity in sales tax. So, that will be one that will be looked carefully at as well as the consumer utility tax number. You'll see it's underperforming a little bit. That's one that has been declining over time, over the past several years as, as they have made changes at the state level with some of these numbers. Recordation and probate taxes continues to very much underperform as we've talked before about the activity in, in those markets. And B-hole taxes, once again, are one that's in the midst of being collected and recorded. We're currently about fifty-nine percent on a sixty-six percent budget, however, they were due on March first and there's still a lot of activity going on. a lot of activity going on in the Commissioner's Office to administer that, get it into the proper accounts. Going down the list, transient occupancy tax still is is performing very well. We're up around sixty eight, sixty nine percent if you take the one month flag compared to sixty six percent. The motor vehicle license also looks low, but that goes along with the personal property. They sell those as they collect property taxes, and those are filed. Paired foods and beverage running well against our budget projections. Excuse me. And the the other reforecasting certainly will be the communications tax that has also underperformed to date from what we have seen. So take a breath for a second and see if there's any any questions there. Oh, and I do, I had a couple of questions from Ms. Moon Reynolds and Mr. Cobb last time. I won't, I won't forget those. And and Mr. Cobb, tell me if that this is all, but you had a question about the residential and commercial breakdown. Coming from the real estate office, they've indicated that their most current numbers represent about a sixty six and a half percent residential overall, what makes up our our base with about a thirty three point six percent commercial industrial. I'm not sure what the the economic developers say you should be at these days, but.
And we real estate classify as multifamily in the commercial category, I think, also.
And so I'll take Ms. Moon Reynolds' question here in a second, after we go through some of the miscellaneous, I believe you had asked last time. You'll see the permits, whoops, I'm sorry.
Are we moving on from taxes?
Yes, local taxes to our other non-local taxes.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Yes, please.
It sounds like people are spending less at the store, sales tax being down, but they're still going out to eat, so seeing those numbers.
I would like to say, I'm not sure I would say sale tax, sales tax is down. It's not growing to the level we thought it would. So it's probably still going to reflect year over year growth, just probably slightly below our budget projections that had a growth factor in it.
Okay, so below our projections, but still growth overall from the past.
Yes.
Because I always focus on what our projections are, because I expect that's where we think our numbers will be, and that's how we set how much we're going to spend in our budget. I had a question about the the personal property tax. You mentioned that there could be a surplus. What percentage is this looking like? And given the the opportunity that we have to, depending on how much and what it is to either return part of this back to the taxpayers, or look at what's happening with revenue in our other categories, but what is the timeframe with which we would need to take action on that? Because does a rebate can happen really at any point? I mean, I know we want to look at our other numbers first.
The entire finance department will leave if we talk about a rebate again, just because of the mechanics, not because of what it what it means associated with it. I think what we're actually looking at this tied to year end, because this is, this is how we're currently performing. This is actually factoring into some of our thinking about what we end up proposing for FY twenty five. If that, if it appears that we're seeing a trend or a pattern with those, so that's how we're using it, is actually the other the other piece of it, because it's a whole lot easier and a lot more efficient to actually address it upfront versus the rebate and stuff.
So depending on what that surplus is, if we could try and bake that into our calculations for next year, so we could hopefully not see so much, an increase in someone's assessment of their vehicle, and that they'll be taxed more appropriate of it.
Yeah, if there's a way to to address that. And what also, then, the other impact it'll do is it'll address, obviously, what you use with any surplus for year end expenditures. So that's the other piece for council ultimately be thinking of. Now, that'll be several months from now, if there is a surplus, how we use that surplus. And we'll be talking in April about how we're using, how we propose to use year end twenty three surplus. So this will affect that also if it continues in a positive sort of projection. So that's the second piece to be thinking about.
I would much prefer putting this in on the front end. I know that there's an expense even doing the rebate and making sure that people are just taxed less in the first place. It'd make more sense for me. But my overall question, what is the, what are projections looking like with that percentage?
And I would hesitate to get out in front of the Commissioner on that. We were budgeting at about a four or five percent increase, and preliminary numbers have shown a number above that as far as just valuation. So we're, we're happy with our four or five percent will probably be met. I would like to defer that question to the Commissioner.
We'll wait for the Commissioner to know that.
We were hoping to know that last week. We're hoping to know that this week.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mary.
Did anybody have a, okay, that's on you.
Okay. And the non-local taxes going down, as we have indicated, there was fee increase this past year in permits fees and license. However, I did not, was not able to get to the permit numbers for you today, but activity is up as well as fee increases are up. So we we are still fairly healthy in that area. As we go down the list, once again, the revenue from use of money and property is a shining beacon right now for us for some, some extra funds that we could use. The grants and aid to the Commonwealth, that does look considerably low, however, they generally lag, and sometimes it's as late as as July or even August to get the final social security, social security, DSS numbers in from the state. So they they're typically lagged behind, so nothing to worry about there. Said the charges for service is is one of those that initially, I really need to get a little more information on that. Jason has indicated those categories look good. There's no reason to have concern right now, but I'd like to get a little more information. I always thought that was primarily the charges for service or fire and EMS service or EMS services. However, that is doing well this year, so we will look at a couple of those other areas. The miscellaneous revenue, I think Ms. Moon had a comment last, excuse me, last month, and there's a whole lot of things in there. We could get you a, if you're interested to see it, the breakdown. But for example, some of the things, as you see in the miscellaneous revenue there, that's got the, trying to look the seven hundred and forty four, seven hundred and ninety four thousand. That's kind of a catchall account, for example. Wellness reimbursements are posted there. Some grants and donations are put there, such as, they indicate that we still have a DARE program. We do not, but the money that that's now channeled through comes through there, and some other sheriff's programs. So it's a, an assortment of things each year that may drop in there. There is also a fire and EMS grant that was recorded here that will be transferred to the general fund, excuse me, to the grant fund, once they get all the paperwork. So if you're interested in more of the detail, we can find that.
Yeah, because it appears that with trending, excuse me, higher, which is good, I suppose, on the actual compared to last year, you're, you're about twenty four, about twenty four, two hundred and forty some thousand.
Correct.
Yeah.
And once again, you had asked about the non-operating funds there as well.
Yes.
And as I get to my answer sheet.
Yeah, that one is really.
That has been, according to the analysts, that has been primarily due to funding for some fire and EMS vehicles. That is, and it will, it transfers from the capital fund into this. If you know, anytime there's a transfer to a fund, it has to be recorded as revenue. So and at the end, just so you know, it's all, the transfers in and out are canceled out, so there's no real impact.
So don't get excited about.
Yeah, so nothing to get too excited on that. That's, that's fire and some ambulances. I think we recently purchased some of those were rebuilds. So on the non-local taxes, I don't have any questions. And if not, we'll move into the expenditures really quick. The first one, I just sort of looked into the non-departmental, you'll see, well, well under. I'm often asked, that's a large number, but that has a lot, a whole lot of things in it, but it's the big numbers, like the school transfer, which is up considerably this year because of our new revenue. We have debt transfers in those numbers. So I think I'd probably, before Mr. Cowell, we end out our budget discussions, we'll give them a detail of some of the major things, maybe in one of our work sessions, just so you know what's in that large number. In public safety, you see that running a little head, we're getting a little closer in our month to month comparisons on that, but overtime is still the culprit in our public safety areas as calls increase. Salaries have increased as well, so that will drive that overtime number. And that is, I think I mentioned to you last time, we were, or there, we are involved in a sort of looking at those overtime dollars and how they're calculated and things like that through the public safety area. Public works, you'll see, is still a little high. Well, let me make sure of that. Yes, a little bit more primarily for doing a lot of their construction work that really builds up against their smaller operating budgets that cause that number. No concern there at this point. And as we go down, the judicial administration, we did find out a little extra, they are all the way at the bottom. They are experiencing around a ten percent increase in detention costs that is driving that up a little bit along, in general, though, they have relatively small budgets, but detention cost seems to be affecting their percentage of the budget as well. So all in all, there is not any indication that departments will run over their budgets. There's always that that chance at the end of the year as that grows, but analysts are very close in monitoring this, and departments are very vigilant in tracking that cost as well. So if you have any other questions or questions, be happy to answer. Not I'll let you hear from Jeremy here in just a second.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary Lee, I just have, it's more one comment to make, and this may relate to the public safety increase. Trying to relate this to our earlier conversation, you know, I saw when what occurred in my neighborhood with this overdose situation, the number of personnel that have to come out for one call, and what I expect that cost of the city, the amount of money that the city is putting in with the settlement dollars will hopefully have a greater return than what that cost us for those things happening in the city, because the number of fire trucks, the police that were out there, the EMS, and the number of personnel I saw in a short period of time, those are a lot of tax dollars all around one incident.
What's your point on that?
Just that might be where we're seeing some of the increase, and trying to relate to what happened earlier, but where we're spending those dollars is every dollar is hopefully going to return something good for the city. Thank you.
And we will move to our final briefing, and we'll start with with Jeremy. And this is a quick update from the Regional Commission on sort of their annual activities, and then we'll roll straight in from there into discussion you all requested around smart scale. So those would be kind of a two for within one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of city council for having me this afternoon. I see a lot of you, at least once a month, participating in the Regional Commission. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today and kind of set up the subsequent conversation about the smart scale program. I'm going to talk, try briefly as possible to talk about three project areas that we've worked on at the commission in the last year that have touched directly on activities at the the city. I think Mr. Leftwich did a great job of talking about our role with the collective response, so I'm going to skip over that one. But I I do want to say we're excited to be able to host and formalize that program, and I think that fits in really well with our mission of coordinating all of our regional localities around issues that that extend beyond our borders. So the questions earlier about the participation of Salem and Roanoke County in some of the OAA activities is really appropriate in a lot of what happens at the commission. I do always like to provide a brief refresher for those of you who may not be as familiar with what the Regional Commission does. We are one of twenty one planning districts in the state with, charged by the Code of Virginia to work with our member localities on issues of more than local significance. So anything that extends beyond the border of one of our eleven member localities, we're here to help convene discussions, develop programs, find efficient solutions to whatever that issue is. Again, opioid crisis is a great example of that. We do a ton of work in the areas of environmental, commuter assistance, transportation, which we'll talk about in a moment, housing, et cetera, because we know those are all big regional issues. Our primary goal is to help you save money by addressing issues with your neighbors and finding solutions across those borders. Big challenges and big opportunities. We're here to kind of help convene everyone around those answers. Transportation being a big one, you don't want to all do that individually. So we work together to coordinate infrastructure investments across the region, so everyone can do those as as efficiently as possible. I think we are a pretty good investment for every dollar that the Regional Commission brings in in local dues. We leverage that against eleven additional dollars in state, federal, and other funding that goes either back into programming. It'll go into construction, as a moment we talk about housing. But those are all dollars that are reinvested in our region and in your community that come from other sources. So we do leverage what you pay into the commission to bring resources home to help our communities. And you've heard me say we a lot. We have a great staff, and I'm very proud of what they do. But when I say we, I actually mean you, our local government partners. We can't do anything without the participation and engagement of our boards and councils, administrative staff, and the folks that work with us that bring us ideas, tell us your needs, and help us figure out what opportunities there are to address. So Mr. Volson and Ms. Moon Reynolds do double duty on both the TPO and the commission, and we really appreciate you for that. Vice Mayor Cobb, you, we appreciate your recent appointment as Chair of the SEDS and your participation in in that committee. And you're really important for making sure that we're doing the right thing. We touch on, like I said, three project areas real quickly that we have worked on in the last year. The first is our work in affordable housing. You might remember in two thousand twenty one, we received sort of an experimental grant program through Virginia Housing called the PDC Housing Development Grant. Virginia Housing funded all the planning districts. We had, we applied, and all the planning districts were awarded funding so that we could help address regional housing issues and figure out what was the right solution for our region. So we received two million dollars. We put out a call for applications, received several applications for projects in the city and one for a multifamily project in Covington, right when supply chain collapsed and so forth. So it was hard to get some of these projects in line, but some of these things are now finally starting up. We have partnered in the city with Habitat for Humanity Restoration Housing and the Redevelopment Housing Authority to fund, as you can see, put one point four million into what currently thirteen units that have been completed. And you can see on those, on the photos there, those are two habitat homes on Tasewell and Stewart Avenue that received funding through that regional commission pot. There are another thirty seven units due before the end of the grant period, which will be December twenty twenty five. These are mostly single family homes with these particular partners. This grant program is pretty flexible for funding multifamily, mixed use, and so forth. As I mentioned, the project in Covington, for example, is a adaptive reuse of an elementary school and converting that into affordable apartments. And I should note that these are specifically affordable units. They have to be at least eighty percent of area median income to qualify for this program. In many cases, with the partners we're working with, those affordability measures are better than that, but that is the minimum that we are required to do under the Virginia Housing Program. So we're excited to to be able to do this. We are hopeful. Discussions are happening at the state now to repeat that project with Virginia Housing. We've, everyone in every planning district in the state beat its goals for housing developments by factors, you know, algorithmically higher than what we were asked to do. So we're, it was a very successful program, and we're hopeful that it will will come back. So some of your investment has come back in the form of additional housing. Similar to housing, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Southeast Crescent Regional Commission. You, some of you might be familiar with the Appalachian Regional Commission, longtime federal regional commission supporting poverty reduction and economic development in Appalachia. For us, Roanoke and Franklin County are the little bite taken out of the Appalachian Regional Commission, so those resources don't apply to that portion of our footprint. And the Regional Commission footprint, Craig, Bonita, and Allegheny Counties all receive support from the Appalachian Regional Commission. The Southeast Crescent is a new federal regional commission that was just stood up last year. It's been on the books for about twenty years, but didn't receive some of the checkboxes that needed the federal level to get stood up. It's now standing up, and it serves all the rest of the counties in the Southeast US that aren't part of the ARC. So this is now a federal regional commission that serves Roanoke City, Roanoke Valley, and Franklin County. It is brand new. It is not super well funded, but we do have a small pot of planning funds to do some of those economic development activities, and we've chosen at the commission to focus that on affordable housing. That's obviously a big need. The target communities for us are Roanoke City and Franklin County. Those are the closest to meeting the levels of distress that are the SERC's kind of target areas. And with this funding, we're focused on a couple of activities surrounding maybe a developer's roundtable to engage the private sector to better understand what the barriers are, workforce, supply chain, permitting utilities, and figure out what we can do on a regional level to address those barriers. level to address those barriers. And we're also looking at regional educational materials promoting the benefits of more and diverse housing, that might be some tools that communities can take out long before a project's even proposed, to try to warm up a neighborhood to understand why they might see changes coming down the line. And I know the city is doing a lot of that work already through the zoning, so this is hopefully expanding that regionally, so that we know that a lot of folks don't live in the same region they work in necessarily. So, this might be a way to kind of bring everyone on board and get more housing across the region. This program will go, will keep going, but this is just our first year working with the SERC, and we hope this will bring more resources to the Roanoke Valley. And my last, this will be my bridge to what Mr. Darden will be talking about in a minute, and Ms. Moon Reynolds and Mr. Volson, they have unfortunately sat through, I think Mr. Pretty sat through some of this as well at the TPO, so I apologize for redundancy, but about half the work we do at the Commission has to do with transportation funding, and a lot of the transportation funding in the state comes through the state's Smart Scale Program. So, last October, word made it down to us that there were rules changes being considered in Richmond that would, in short, funnel a lot of the state money to congestion management projects in Northern Virginia and pull that money away from not just the Roanoke Valley, but the rest of the state. New rules, scoring mechanisms and so forth would kind of deprioritize the kind of projects we've been really successful at, not just the highway and capacity projects, but things like greenways, bike and ped projects, safety improvements, those would now suddenly score a lot more poorly on Smart Scale in favor of adding additional lanes to 66 and 95 and so forth. So, we got to work, working with our Commonwealth Transportation Board member, working with VDOT staff, engaging the CTV directly. I sat through a lot of four-hour CTV meetings so that our local government partners didn't have to, just to understand what those rules were and kind of what the concerns were. Spent a lot of time getting information and educating the CTV members about what would the rest of Virginia look like if these rules changes were made. At the December CTV meeting and later ratified at the January meeting, happily, a lot of the worst of those changes did not happen, so I think we, along with a lot of other state partners, successfully advocated on behalf of our needs. There were still some changes that we're not happy with, and we're continuing to work on those, and one of the things that we have always done and will continue to do is provide support to your staff and the staff of all of our member localities submitting smart scale projects to figure out how can we make sure those are the most competitive projects as possible, under whatever the rules happen to be. We also know the Transportation Board changes with new administrations, and there's always opportunities to go back and revisit these rules in the future, so we can kind of track and measure what the impact on our region was. So, it wasn't 100% good news, but it could have been a lot worse, and it involves a lot of Regional Commission and TPO staff working at a state level to make sure that that happened. That was real quick, there's a ton of things that happened at the Commission, I didn't want to kind of go over everything. Those are some of the areas that we spent a lot of time in, housing, transportation. So, I want to emphasize some of the things that we've done that have directly impacted the city. Coming up, I'll highlight real quick for time, we are currently undertaking an EV market study. VDOT completed one last year focused on the I-81 corridor. We're looking at what we need, not just in the Roanoke Valley, but across the region, to make sure people have a reason to not just stop at the Sheets or potentially the Buc-Ee's right off of 81, but they have a region to come into our communities to park their cars. We know it takes 20, 30 minutes to charge a car, so you might as well have lunch, go shopping, visit downtown, do something while you're here. We want to make sure our communities know the grant resources are out there, the things that need to happen in terms of grid capacity and all those sorts of technical things to make sure that we're positioned as a region to meet that market, support those folks, but also make sure the folks come off the highway into our communities. And I'm going to leave it there, we do a lot of other stuff, for those of you on the Commission, we're always happy to take new projects on board. If there's time, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I primarily just want to thank you for your participation and your support of the Regional Commission, and we're very excited to be able to work with you and take on some of these projects, and hopefully set things up so that what Duane's going to talk about here in a little bit makes for more successful Smart Scale projects. So, thank you very much.
I just have one quick question. When will you come back with the market study on the EV charging station?
So, that should wrap up by the end of this fiscal year, so it should wrap up by June. So, we should have recommendations, you know, as early as July, and can come back at any point and talk about what those will look like.
Thank you.
Yeah, there should be an implementation plan kind of associated with that.
I thought, did, but I do, because she doesn't.
She can let me know, can you let me know if you've got a question?
No, 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 I changed my mind, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
I do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for this. On Smart Scale, I wouldn't ask you to share the changes that you're unhappy with, I would ask if you could share what are the changes that may impact us as a locality. I know some of the things that were considered may reduce the number of applications that each locality may be able to see as they're moving forward, but before that, just, whenever I think of Smart Scale, there's a quote about democracy being the worst form of government except for all the other forms that have been tried. Smart Scale is probably the worst way to fund transportation projects, except for every other formula that's been tried. So, it's the best one that we have, but what limitations might we see as a locality with some of the changes that went through? Because I know some of them went through and then were voted to be reversed at the same meeting.
Right.
And just how will that impact what we're going to do?
So, real quickly, the application cap ended up not going through, so that was one of the ones we were scared at, because it limited both what you can do as a locality, but localities can also bring applications to both the Commission and the TPO to make on your behalf if there are regionally significant projects. There were caps proposed to both of those, and none of those ended up going through, and we do have Ray Smoot, our CTV member, to thank, he was opposed to that. Not just him, but he was a major voice for making sure that didn't go through. Some of the other, the things that probably have the highest impact on us, and without getting too technical, one of the scores looks at land use. That is a benefit to when you're doing projects that involve density, bike and pedestrian, that factor has been changed. We're not sure, one of the other things with Smart Scales, you often don't know how well things did until everything's funded, because it's projects are, they score relative to every other project in the state. So, some years, like the year the Hampton Road Bridge Tunnel was applied, everything else failed, and they sucked up half the money in the state. Next year, other projects suddenly looked a lot more competitive than they did the year before. So, that one, we're not sure what that will look like, but we do know that score has often benefited more urban projects. The other one was there, when we go after a project as a regional organization, there's a separate pot of money that we go after that's kind of a statewide pot. The rules for what kind of projects could go after that money was initially really, really limited, so that almost nothing we've done before would ever qualify again. They expanded it a little bit more in the end. So, it's more limited than last round, but less limited than they had initially proposed. Initially, the proposal was basically just going to be, if you weren't adding capacity, you could not go after some of the big regional pots. So, again, things that we did that were more safety or smaller projects, and we've generally been very good at stringing a lot of small projects together to eventually get a big project done. The state basically said we only want giant makeup projects in this particular pot of money. We're afraid there's too many little projects being done elsewhere in the state. So, again, we're not, we're probably not sure exactly how that will play out until we get through this round, but one of the things we always do every year is we do an analysis and share that with the TPO on how those things scored, you know, where everything fell in the state and what we can learn from that for next time around.
Thank you.
Jeremy, thank you for the report. I've just got a general comment or question to ask you. Do you get many minority applicants for staff positions?
We, I'll tell you, as a lot of folks do, we have had a real struggle filling any open position that we've had. We have in the, you know, we have in the past, but the planning industry right now, I guess you'd say, is, has been a real struggle. We've had, for example, we had an open economic development position for, since last October. It took us half a year to fill our Director of Transportation position. So, we do have internal, you know, internal goals through our DEI initiatives and others to try to get the best candidates, you know, the best candidates that are as representative of our communities as possible. We do have projects where we reach out to a list of universities across the country to try to advertise planning positions to newly graduating urban planners or regional planners. We're not always able to hit those targets just because the market has been real tough on us right now. So, we're probably not where we would ideally like to be, but we do have things in place that we try to encourage as broad a diversity of candidates as we can possibly get.
Let me offer a suggestion to you, and I made this to the School Board, and I think they've changed up in terms of, not changed up, but they're beginning to move in that direction with recruiting, is there, we're not too far from a number of HBCUs. And I think sometimes we, this old song says, you're looking in the wrong places for some time, especially when you talk about minority applicants, you know, we're two hours away from two HBCU universities, Winston-Salem State and North Carolina A&amp;T, and so I think, I'd like to see more, even from the city, and I think we did, because I went on a recruitment tool to the CIWA tournament, and we have the CIWA come in. They come in and they bring those schools, but those are some schools that we should consider looking for, if we're looking for, especially minority students, and I'm sure many of them, if you asked them today, they'd say, yeah, we got some people that are interested in planning, have done well, have graduated, or they know some. So, I would suggest you look into that area as you go forward.
And I appreciate that, we do have one list that we developed, we outreach, but I'm not sure that we're, we've got everyone on that list and have contacts in the planning departments or the kind of student services that we need on that, so we'll definitely revisit that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else got any?
I just have a.
Okay.
I just have a quick comment. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Over here. I just want to thank Jeremy and his staff, the RVARC, you know, Ms. Moon Reynolds and myself get to serve on the RVARC and the TPO, and their staff is always very professional. The planning that they do, the analysis that they give us, whether it's policy, whether it's, you know, trail numbers, it's amazing what we get as being part of the RVARC, and so I just want to thank him and his staff for everything they do to help us in, as a city and as a region.
Thank you very much, I'll pass that on to staff. We'll have part two of this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Like some others have voiced, we really are fortunate to have he and his staff that work well with us in transportation and give us a lot of good feedback on the, I'm a member of the Transportation Technical Committee, which is a subcommittee of the TPO, so just thank you to him for everything that he does. We really are fortunate and benefit from what he and his staff do for us. So, I want to talk about the results of Smart Scale. Orange Avenue in particular, we've got a lot of funds coming to Orange Avenue as a result of Smart Scale. So, before I do that, though, let's talk about some numbers. So, you see on the screen here some traffic volume numbers, daily traffic and volume numbers, I-581 Peters Creek to I-81, 44,000, Herschberger Road, I-581 to Williamson, 38,000, and then Orange Avenue, 40,000 between Hollins and Gus Nix. The first two are similar, the last one is different. Who can tell me how?
Go ahead.
The first two are in Interstate, they're three lanes.
Three lanes.
And they're limited access.
That's right. Three lanes in each direction, Orange Avenue is obviously two lanes, but you look there, Herschberger, 38,000 vehicles a day, three lanes versus Orange Avenue. How many have sat in traffic on Orange Avenue? A good number, a good number. So, when I talked to, when I came to the city 24 years ago now, the conversation on Orange was, let's three-lane Orange, just like Herschberger, between 11th Street and 24th Street, or Gus Nix at the time, and then continue that on out to the city limits there at Blue Hills. Now, the cost of that at this day and age would be well north of $200 million. That type of project would not likely get funded in the current scenario that we live in. This is in 2007, VDOT started the Strategically Targeted Affordable Roadway Solutions, they love their acronyms, but the STARS Program in 2018, the VDOT, the city worked with VDOT and did a STARS study along Orange Avenue, and the question is, what are we going to do with Orange Avenue to try to get, not only adjust, address the mitigation, but the, address the congestion along Orange Avenue, but also some pedestrian improvements as well. So, let's step back and talk about Smart Scale in just a little bit. It's 100% grant-funded program, so we've got a lot of money coming to the city that's 100% funded. Corridor statewide significance, what does that mean? It's usually a numbered route, so Route 11, Route 460, that type of thing, but there's also some smaller things that get funded out of Smart Scale, Jeremy alluded to those. But there are five criteria, and this is unique to what makes the Smart Scale program tick, and every year, as Jeremy alluded to, it's different. The scoring is different every single year, depending upon what gets submitted, because it's a relative score based upon what gets submitted. Safety, congestion mitigation, accessibility, environmental quality, and that come on, development, those are the five things that get measured. So, as I alluded to, you see that number there, $67 million is what's coming to the city, 100% VDOT-funded, and that's to mitigate congestion and do things along Orange Avenue. It is not three-laning, none of this will be three lanes. It's simply a matter of how do we spend money most effectively, and this will be done in two phases. The first phase, which is actually a Smart Scale round three, four, and five. Round five is the I-581 to 24th Street, that got funded and was awarded last year, last round, construction is in 2029. The phases before that that are going to get started in 2026, the Blue Hills Drive, the King Street, and the Sibley Road, and we will talk about that going forward, about what those details look like. Before the program gets started with Smart Scale, VDOT applied for and was awarded some Virginia Highway Safety Improvement Program funding, $4.5 million, that will jump-start one of the projects on 581, on the 581 off-ramp at Orange Avenue, turning on to Orange there at the Bergland Center, and that will begin construction in 2025. This is a VDOT-administered project, and this is what that looks like. Let me see if I can get my, so if you're coming off the Orange Avenue ramp there, and this is the Bergland Center, this is the Bergland Center, Magic City Ford, this is where the former Sheets is, but if you're coming off the ramp, what will happen is you'll have a signal here. Now, this is an interim project, this is a single-turn lane, but it will be channelized, the engineers call it the traffic weave coming across here. We're trying to eliminate the traffic weave, because there's a lot of crashes that result as part of that. This lane will remain open in 2026 when this begins. The Smart Scale Program will actually allow and have two dual right lanes here, and this slip lane, as they call it, will go away. There will also be, as part of the There will also be, as part of the Smart Scale project, dual lefts turning on to Williamson, but we'll talk about that here in just a little bit. So, the H-SIP program will do this in 2025. It's an interim program, so essentially they're creating this first step, traffic signal, and then we'll funnel folks into this, into this lane to be able to turn, and this will be channelized so that you cannot make that weave across into there. It will help eliminate that traffic weave movement.
So, looking at this, when you create the turning lane, you're going to put a barrier down on Orange to keep the cars from...
Correct.
Going to the right, but able to, excuse me, over to the left.
Correct.
Okay.
So, these Orange will be delineators, you'll have delineators here. The only way to get into this turn lane will be to stop at the traffic signal and come across. You will not be able to weave into this, into the turn lane anymore, which is what the movement is now, they call it the weave, and that's where, one of the most dangerous pieces of coming across there. So, that's the H-SIP program.
Dwayne, I'm glad that I'll be able to retire as a professional weaver. But I'm curious, and, and I know that this project may not address this issue, but when you're coming off of 581 on the other side to enter onto Orange Avenue, I know that's also a challenging section because that lane is both, and, and the same issue on 581, it, the length of that, both merging lane to turn off and, and merging to get on is...
Coming southbound, turning on to Gainesboro, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Smart Scale will take care of that, and we'll look at that in here in just a few minutes.
Oh.
But that'll be 2029, this will be 2025.
Yeah, it's, it's coming off of 581, getting onto Orange.
We'll look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Glad you asked the question, though.
That's true.
All right. So, let's jump into this, and let me see if I can click this, and it will go directly to it. There it is. Your browser is up to date.
It was not working.
All right, so...
Is that better?
This is exactly what you were talking about, right?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So, this is, let's get our bearings here, wherever we are, so this is, this is the former school administration building here, this is coming southbound on Orange, Gainesboro is behind us here. So, this will, similarly, we will have a traffic signal here, you'll come in directly into it, and there will be no longer, this will go away, so there will be no weave.
No weave.
Come here, there'll be a traffic signal, and you will turn. This signal will be coordinated with the one at Williamson and also the one at Orange, at Gainesboro.
So, those that want to cross over to take the light at Orange Avenue to go to Gainesboro...
Mm-hmm.
Um...
Yep. So, when this traffic signal turns green, there will be no traffic coming this direction.
Oh, okay.
Right?
So, it's, it's holding it at the...
Correct.
Okay.
So, you will have a free and clear to get into this turn lane right here.
But what about on the other side of the interstate when they, okay, sorry.
We'll get to that.
All right, sorry.
I love that you guys are ahead of us.
Yes, we're ready, we're like kids. That's right, we, we can identify with this.
So, I've got to give kudos to RV TV, they put this together for us. You may remember that we showed this two years ago, and it's, it's high definition drone footage, and this is overlaid with the VDOT parcels. All right, let me pause this right here. Okay, so, getting our bearings again, the Burgland Center, the former Sheets building is over here, this is northbound coming off of, onto Orange Avenue eastbound. So, you see that this first lane will be built in 2025 by the VDOT H-SIP project. It will not be two lane, it'll be a single lane, but you'll already get the traffic signal that's here. In 2025, this lane will remain open, so you'll have a slip lane that goes directly eastbound, but you cannot make a turn from this slip lane. In 2029, the Smart Scale project will have dual rights at the same traffic signal, and this will go away. And again, when this traffic signal turns green, you won't have any traffic coming this direction that you will have to worry about. So, that's the way that will work. I'll let this play through here just a little bit, and we'll move on to the Williamson Road.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
So, you know, a lot of that backup is folks trying to get to the Civic Center. Why can't they just have that lane that, it's a right turn, just continue on to the Civic Center?
I was going to ask that.
Yeah. So, this will, you'll have three lanes coming through here continually, that will allow that.
Oh, okay, so there's going to be three lanes, not two?
There, there will be three lanes, there are three lanes now, there'll be two lanes going northbound. There will not be a slip lane, but you'll have two lanes being able to come into that.
So, as it merged, as it continues to go east, and you have an option to turn right...
Correct.
Than you do now, just going in the right lane and just...
Correct.
But you, but you, would you have to maneuver still to get over to the right lane to get to the Civic Center is what I'm trying to figure out, because it should, it seems like it would be nice to have just a flow, you know, all those folks coming off the interstate just to be able to go down that one, like a service lane almost.
So, that, the reason that's not like that is because that's a unique event, and from a safety perspective, a unique event, so we don't have, that's not normal operations in terms of how traffic flows, getting into that.
So, it's just a...
So, it's VDOT's determination.
It is a normal thing. The Burgland Center is very... So, go ahead, Tree, because I got a question.
No, no, I'm done.
Okay, because in the first right lane, and you say you got two lanes going, so if I'm in the left lane and I need to get over to the right lane to make that turn...
Exactly.
People are going to blow their horn at me because I'm going to be ready to cut somebody out.
That's the part that is confusing me because I don't understand, if we do all this work, why would you still have that challenge of trying to make that right turn to get to the Civic Center? It may be a unique event, but it's a, a very often, an event that occurs.
It's going to back up.
Yes, it's still going to, I mean, if you're going to go, do all that work, it seems like it would be an objective to eliminate that problem.
I understand, and I hear you, and we will talk with the VDOT consultants about this. This is, again, a VDOT administered program. We have had input into the process, we don't administer the project.
Okay, well, that's fine, because evidently they don't try to go to the Civic Center.
But that doesn't mean, now, we, we're a long way from design, these are concepts still at this point.
Right, okay, okay, I just want to make sure that we raised that question.
Nothing is, we don't have construction documents, this is 2029 now, this is not 2025.
Yeah, I just don't want it to happen.
But it'll be here before you know it.
Well, yeah. I don't know where I'll be in 2029, but I just would hate to see that happen, and, and you don't make that easier.
It needs to be a trap, seriously.
For folks to get to the Civic Center when they're coming off.
Vice Mayor Com, Ted Clear in charge is a nice guy. All right. I, I like the, the turning light idea, I wish that the slip lanes were staying for, for, for when you're getting off, to be able to keep going. I like the slip lane aspect for people who aren't going to be able to get in and be able to weave and turn left, but to be able to just get in and keep going and not to have those pieces go away. I just, I, I...
But that's what we just said at this moment.
Apparently, I know, so that's why I wanted to make sure I made my comment known, because I, the way, if they could slip this way and even slip in the other way, I do well with getting off of Gainesboro. Do noted on the concerns. The other challenge that we have with this is to get dual lefts onto, northbound Williamson. You see this, we're going to have to cut into that slope to keep this third traveling through. So, if we're going to take more parking out of the Burgland Center, that's a challenge we have to work through, too. Again, this is 2029, we'll go through all the design parameters and think about that as we hear...
And I say that because when you get the traffic light at Williamson and Orange to stop, and you still have people who want to go right, they have got to wait till the traffic moves to continue where you, you, now it is, you can go right and merge onto Williamson Road and yield and go with the traffic. You're saying that's no longer going to be the case.
That's correct.
Perhaps.
If you're not a local, right, and you, you're coming in for our events that we have all the time, and you don't realize that you need to somehow work your way over to that right lane to make that turn right, you're going to be stuck out in that left lane trying to get over still.
Your concerns have been noted, I've got a note right here, we'll take it back to VDOT.
We're going to fix it out, we're going to fix it.
Yes, we do need to keep moving.
Now, I noticed, I'm curious, if, if that's a transportation eyebrow there into the, it's a joke, an eyebrow into the parking lot, or is that going to be a new entrance into the parking lot?
No, it actually is, as the slide moves, it actually...
Oh, it's the new, I'm sorry, it's the new, it's, okay, I see what you're doing. All right, it's putting it earlier, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, the other piece that you will note here is we've got a lot of pedestrian improvements that need be, need to happen here. Not only will you have the high visible building crosswalks, but we'll actually have pedestrian push buttons that are, are better than what we have at that intersection now. The other piece to note...
Can I ask a question right there? Would the median be taken out? I'm, I don't see it.
It will be reduced in size, yes.
So, that might help with standing on...
That will, that's why I said, okay. Met, met it to my back.
The other thing to note on this is that you'll have...
Love that color.
A right, a left, and duals coming through here, and you'll have a left turn lane into Sheets, which we don't currently have. Obviously, this is not Sheets anymore, but whatever redevelops on that parcel, they'll have a left turn lane going into that.
So, the two left turns will just, uh, turn left, they'll have the two lanes on, instead of one lane, you're going into two, where the traffic merges, okay.
All right, let's keep moving here, we'll go on down to the next stop.
U-turn.
All right, so, this is that 11th Street, so this is where Orange Avenue merges from three lanes back into two. If you remember that Strategically Targeted Affordable Roadway Solutions, instead of making this three lane all the way across, VDOT has come up with this through cut, which is a misnomer, you can't really cut through. What this means is you can't cut through. What that allows is you remove a signal from, or a phase from the signal, that allows more green time to the through movement, and that allows a 80% as effective as adding three lanes at about a third of the cost. And you'll hear that, and you say that multiple times now, 80% as effective as adding three lanes, a third of the cost. So, that gets back to that STARS study, and why we're doing what we're doing. So, again, this is coming in 2029. We'll go on from here. Essentially, 11th Street becomes right in, right out on both, on both north and south. All right, so this is a Gus Nix.
Look at that, that's almost like a roundabout.
And you'll see a lot of pedestrian accommodations here, currently, you don't have any crosswalks coming across here, and this will help facilitate pedestrian moving across. Now, similarly, you don't have any through movement going, it'll be right in, right out. So, what does somebody do if they need to turn and go straight across? They go right, make a U-turn, come back. Similarly, if someone's coming this direction, they go left, make a U-turn, come back. That's part of this.
So, you won't have any right turns coming off of Gus Nix?
You can go right.
Oh, there it is, I see it, I see it.
You can go left, you can't go straight.
Right, I see it now, the little, okay, you just won't be able to go over to the other side.
And again, this is about taking away that phase of the signal that would allow the through movement, adding that time that would allow the through movement, putting it back to the main line going on eastbound and or westbound.
So, you pushing the traffic all the way down to Gambi?
Not that far, so there's...
Or either that little cut there, but you could get backed up because you got traffic moving, and so for safety purposes, you may have to go to the light.
So, they're, no, they're, they're designed so that you can pull over and make the U-turn.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's part of this project.
I'll see it when you go down.
Ms. Sanchez Jones, do you have an issue with not being able to go straight?
Not being able to go across...
Well, you better speak up.
You better speak up.
You better talk. Sorry.
There are compromises with this, there's, there's no question. Again, this is, this is 80% of the effectumus, a third of the cost.
So, we're going to be able to go straight to McDonald's further down. I'm waiting for you to go further down, I'm wobbling up.
She wants to see McDonald's. She wants to see she go to McDonald's.
So, you can move down Orange.
Yes.
Forget about all of that, she wants to get to McDonald's.
I thought you wanted to go over to the dairy shop.
And, and, right, you know, both ways.
So, if you wanted to go to Dairy Queen, you have to go all the way down and make a U-turn.
You make a U-turn, that's correct.
Now, we...
All right, so this is King Street, this is where you want to talk about.
Pretty victim, isn't it?
No, what are you, that's not victim, Mayor.
This is the McDonald's where she's concerned about on King Street.
Okay, I'm trying to get you...
This is the McDonald's that we're talking about, right here. This is McDonald's, Rock Fab, Waffle House. So, again, no through movement, you have to go down, turn around, and come back on both sides, and that's part of this process.
And so, then you couldn't go back across, so you still got to go down and go back.
That's right, you got to make a U-turn. This is happening not just in Roanoke, this is happening on 220, this is happening on 419, it's coming in a lot of areas, not just in Roanoke. We just happen to be the guinea pigs.
So, coming west, there is no turning onto King, right? They're having to go straight. Where's the turn at?
Here, here's the turn lane coming on.
Okay, 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 no.
Yep, and there'll be a turn lane this direction.
Going over to McDonald's if you happen to be, except for on, on this side, you can't, you got to go, come back.
Now, I think the question becomes, if this is three lanes in each direction, what are you going to impact in terms of businesses otherwise, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's, that's the other piece of this affordable roadway solution is, with all the right of way impacts, businesses are going to feel it some with this, but they would certainly feel it if we end up taking some businesses to make the three lanes in each direction. So, I think we have to keep that in mind as well. There are no perfect solutions.
But, but if you make that U-turn, you've got to work your way all the way over to the right in order to get into McDonald's, which is going to create a challenge.
It's going to hurt the businesses because if you're traveling and you're trying to make a U-turn and you see traffic moving, you're going to just keep going.
Keep going.
Yeah. And go down to Chick-fil-A. In the county.
That's interesting.
So, Dwayne?
Yes.
Okay, stay down here, please.
Yes.
Where you are. Are they going to expand the turning lane from Orange into King Street? The turning lane is pretty short.
This turn lane? Yes.
It's pretty short.
It will be extended. Yes, that's part of this project, same thing on this side back here. Both of those will be extended.
Still doesn't make it...
They're too short.
Okay, it's too short.
Yeah, they'll both be extended. And of course, you'll see the pedestrian accommodations here, which don't exist currently. All right. The last one is coming up here at Blue Hills Drive, and then we'll talk about a few forthcoming applications.
So, to go to McDonald's, we'll have to go...
And, and try to get over three lanes of traffic, yeah.
And drive to Blue Hills and then turn around.
Just, just follow, you can end up at Chick-fil-A and a cake bar.
You might want to think about mixed delivery, they have that now.
It's the principle.
Similarly, here, you don't have a through movement, you've got extended turn lanes and offset turn lanes, which is good from a safety standpoint, and you've got the pedestrian accommodations. So, that's really the focus of these projects, along Orange Avenue.
Right there, you have, I was trying to see, so you're turning left there to go to Blue Hills?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yep.
That's where you get to turn around.
I, I just don't understand that, those concepts, especially catering to pedestrians, and I have not seen many pedestrians in that area. How many pedestrians are you, that are trying to cross over to Blue Hills?
Not a lot, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't accommodate.
But, but then to, to inconvenience the people who travel, those...
So, to be clear, the pedestrian accommodations are not the reason for not going through. The, the reason for the no through movement is to remove a signal phase.
Right.
How much green time is allocated to the through movement going as Ms. Sanchez Jones wants to do, go to McDonald's, right?
No.
You take that green time and you apply it to Orange Avenue, coming and going.
Yeah, I guess the, the.
That's the whole.
My concern is the congestion, you know, trying to mitigate that.
Yes, it is congestion mitigation and capacity preservation. Those are the two things we're trying to do.
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me. My concern is people that are on their lunch break, over down at Virginia Transformer.
Yes.
How long is it gonna take them for them to go down and come back around and go back to work?
Yeah, honestly, it shouldn't add more than a minute, quite frankly. I mean, it really, once, if you go to North Carolina, you'll see these all over the place. If you go up into the northern states, they are ubiquitous. That's just part of the thing that is driving transportation at this point, is how do we efficiently move traffic? And not spend hundreds of millions of dollars on projects like this when we can solve the same scenario with a third of the cost? And get eighty percent of the results. And that's really, that's not just a, again, that's not a city thing. You will see this on 419, you will see this on 220, you will see this in other areas of the state.
So you said that there's forty thousand vehicles that go to Orange Avenue?
On a portion of Orange, yes.
And after the apartments are, the new project goes up, how many more vehicles you?
I don't know the number. I know we've looked at that, and Iain's, Iain Coffey back here, one of our traffic engineers, looks at that as part of the comprehensive development plan review process. It's, it's not gonna add, I mean, it's not a ten percent increase, it's certainly not that much, but it is additional traffic. And this is all about that, right? Are we gonna have more development along Orange? Yes.
Yes.
So there's two options. We either do what we're talking about here, or we add a third travel in each direction. And if we add a third travel in each direction, that means some businesses will have to be bought out, and they will not be there anymore. Is that the right option?
It also, it also probably lessens the chance the project ever happens.
Correct.
Because of our ability to actually compete for those funds.
And these are, these are all cost-benefit ratio. That's what Smart Scale is about. It's not simple or easy.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
When we talked about pedestrian crossing, whereabouts in there would a pedestrian cross? Show me, would there be ways that they know it's okay, it's safe to cross?
Yes.
To get to the other side?
There will be pedestrian signals that tell you to walk, and it will be timed such that if they can walk all the way across, if for some reason they got caught in the middle, there's a refuge aisle in here.
That length, it was just that length, and you get caught, you're stuck in them, standing in the middle.
They can get across.
Okay, so there is a, what is it, a paver kind of thing right there in the center?
So there's, this is a concrete refuge median, yep. So they know how to go across the crosswalks there.
Okay, okay.
Dwayne, I know that a King Street is a walkway very needed, because there is a hotel, and people are always walking to the convenience stores and McDonald's.
And McDonald's, and you have Valley Metro Transit stops here on all of these.
Right outside the.
Yeah. So how do they move right at this point?
I have a few questions that relates to this.
I just wanted, before you start asking, there's a series of questions. It's 429 now, we have some closed meetings, so I'm gonna have to be cautious in time.
And I did have a question too, Mr. Mayor, once Mr. Pretty finishes with his nine-assure. Could I go?
Are you still at the floor?
Oh, I do, okay, thank you. Let me just go back real quick, Dwayne, if you could. My question is, on the first page you had, where you had the forty-four thousand for the I-581 Peters Creek?
Yes.
What distance were you looking at, clocking the forty-four thousand?
That's from Peters Creek to eighty-one. As you get closer to the city, it's actually higher. It's.
And I'm just trying to think, whereabouts on Peters Creek where you're coming to, I mean, to eighty-one? Are you?
So this is from Peters Creek on I-581. If you start at Peters Creek Road Bridge, headed towards eighty-one, or vice versa, coming from eighty-one until you get to the Peters Creek Road Bridge. That's the segment of I-581.
Because Peters Creek goes so far down, I was just trying to measure where you, what the distance was, where you were calculating the forty-four thousand on Peters Creek.
It's, now, it's not on Peters Creek, it's on I-581.
Right there, at the interchange you're looking at.
This is the through volume on I-581, and the segment is between eighty-one and Peters Creek.
That short distance is what you're.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I, okay. And the same thing now on the thirty-eight thousand you have on Hershberger, that's at the exit. That's where I'm confused at with that one, I-581 to Williamson.
Correct. So this is on Hershberger, and the segment along Hershberger is between the I-581 off-ramp and Williamson Road. So it's that.
Down, off of, right there, where it connects at Walgreens.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, that's how the traffic engineers look at traffic volumes, is between point A and point B.
Okay, I know that, but are they incorporating also the traveling traffic that's coming from Coe, that's actually on Hershberger when you merge from the interstate, I mean, from the I-581 onto, onto Hershberger?
Yes, that would be a separate segment of Hershberger. There's a separate traffic volume.
How do they differentiate between, cause, I'm just asking a question, that's all.
It's just the traffic volume on Hershberger that travels that segment.
So they just click it from that point?
Correct.
Okay, you answered the question. Okay, thank you.
I know it's confusing, I'm sorry.
No, that made sense. I was just trying to see where they were clocking the traffic.
Yep, understood.
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
I promise it'll be quick. I'll get through my thoughts organized this time. They hardly are. What are, what are these things called? They're not, they're not roundabouts, they're basically roundabouts where you can't go all the way around to go across straight. You're forced to make a turn. Do they have a designation?
It's a through cut.
A through cut.
There's through cuts and R-cuts.
I'm just, I'm just wondering what the, I expect citizens to come up with some campaign about how they don't like these things at some point, and what they're appropriately called. So I understand the pedestrian access being limited. Instead of having four points where people can cross, you've kind of limited people to go into one area so pedestrians go across. I do have concerns about how safe those areas are, and as they relate to those concrete refuge areas, maybe also referred to as medians. Are these things typically like larger than four feet wide, smaller than?
Oh, yes, yeah. Okay, well, so. I think the smallest one is ten by ten.
As it relates to that, and the city attorney definitely got a thought after I said that, because we have a safety aspect where people can't be on concrete areas if they're less than four feet, but if they are, they can. And we may be inducing a new problem by having these more than four feet, which they do need to for safety, but where we may have individuals who spend their time there, where they'll have a right by law, even under our code, to do so. And I was gonna ask for an update at the very end about where we are on things, because it's getting warmer outside and more is occurring. But that'd be at the end of this meeting. My last question, to open a separate can of worms, is the two turning lanes onto Williamson Road, does that infer that we're not seeking on reducing from two lanes down to one on Williamson?
The Williamson Road project is up for design criteria. We don't know what that looks like.
Okay.
There will always be two lanes coming from Orange onto Williamson. That gets volume off of Orange onto Williamson. That doesn't mean that at some point it won't funnel back to one.
Okay, all right. Just, that's a separate can of worms. Thank you, those are all the questions.
That is a completely separate can of worms, yes.
Mayor, I just wanted to, one really brief.
Well, I mean, are you done?
I'm, I'm done, done.
Okay, I got you. I know you did. I just wanna make sure everybody, cause you are jumping in. Let me make sure everybody still has the floor, so you, okay.
What about, you know, I know when we have bus stops on Orange, those bus stops are obviously gonna stop traffic. Is there any thought about creating cutouts where the bus stops are so that buses can pull over, grab people, and hopefully not block the flow?
That should all be part of the design process. Excellent question, though. But that really is the reason for these pedestrian accommodations at the intersections, because they are getting dropped off on Orange. How are they getting across? How are the riders getting across?
Absolutely.
Intersection. At this point, it's, they're, they're doing the best they can.
Yeah, I agree, and with the large amount of apartments and other housing developments that have come up on Orange Avenue, it's gonna be very important for pedestrian access there. Thanks so much for the report.
Dwayne?
All right, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
I don't, I'm sorry I had to slip out, but I'm not sure if it came up in here. When I was mentioning earlier the small merge lane, I was talking about coming off I-581, you're going north. You get off of I-581 to get onto Orange.
Yes.
Was that in this presentation? About, is there any work planned for that in terms of addressing the? It's a very small turn lane, so if I'm coming off of I-581 onto Orange, headed west, there are other cars coming from Orange trying to get onto I-581 the other way, going south.
I understand what you're saying.
So is there any provision in this Smart Scale to address that?
It would be.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, you'll have signals at both, both of those.
Okay, which will help address some of that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seems like that's it. Any other? Are you done?
Well, I was gonna talk about Smart Scale upcoming applications. Do you want me to proceed with that, or you want me to leave it?
All right.
All right, so we've got one coming up for this round that is due August 1st. We're looking at Liberty and Lukens, pedestrian access and accommodations. It's about a twelve-million-dollar project. It's essentially just new sidewalk on one side of Liberty, and we'll also do the same thing along Lukens. We're gonna rebuild the traffic signal at Liberty and Williamson, and if funded, we'll look to have this constructed in 2031.
I do have a question on that one, on the traffic signal on Liberty and Williamson.
Yes.
What is, what will that look like? Because it's two lanes.
So we will add a left turn lane, northbound, and a left turn lane coming southbound.
So we don't have to keep trying to cut across, okay, cause I used that one.
So that's what, and it'll also include some pedestrian accommodations. So this is Liberty and Lukens. One thing of note here, you'll have an R-FB. This is Liberty and Lukens here. There's a lot of folks that come and go to this foodway market. So that's an R-FB, Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon, the same thing we'd have at Orange and 11th. You'll have here at this, that'll be a new safety feature.
And that's at the traffic light there at Plantation? Is that where you?
No, this is at Liberty and Lukens.
Liberty, okay.
Liberty and Lukens. This will be part of the Smart Scale project. There's no signal there now.
Right, that's why I was looking back, okay.
All right, looking on to Smart Scale Round Seven, so this will be a 2026 application here. We're talking about the Franklin Road Interchange and potentially building out that to address direct access to the biomedical complex there for Carillion. You see the number there, a hundred million dollars. Will that get funded? We're not sure. Is it a Smart Scale project? We're not sure. The next step on this is an interchange access report. That's about a two-million-dollar lift. We've gotta figure out how to make that happen. But there is a lot of interest in getting better access, more direct access to the biomedical complex and what that looks like. This is a concept of what that might look like. It's called a SPUI, a single-point urban interchange. So the signal would be underneath the bridge. To be able to do that, we would have to raise the bridge on 220. So that means this bridge would have to increase in elevation. This ramp going up and coming off, that would have to be raised several feet, and then you'd have new turn lanes, and you'd have a single point of signalization. Now, again, there's a lot of design. We'll have to talk with the neighborhoods. There's a lot of planning. So again, this wouldn't, we were not talking about application until 2026 at the earliest. Construction would be 2032 at the earliest, probably 2024, or '34, excuse me. And then the other one that's similar is trying to fill out the last piece of Orange Avenue, a new diverging diamond interchange at Orange. So that's another about a hundred-million-dollar lift. We'd look at that in 2026, and what does that look like? Probably be something like this. Now, where have you seen this? Valley View. That's what the Valley View interchange is like. It's a diverging diamond. So this would be the Burgland Center. This would be the former school administration building, and you rebuild so that you'd have an efficient traffic flow in and out, on and off the interstate. So with that, are there any other questions that I might answer?
Mayor, just a very quick comment about the Diamond Interchange.
Yes.
I brought this up in a meeting I had with the VDOT Salem District Office. I have concerns about when the fruit tree plantings, that flower that are planted in the medians, because when you have the diverging diamond, you cannot really see what the light is until you make that curve. And by having those trees in the middle, it blocks them from both ways. And as much as the foliage is beautiful, I think that that prevents a line of access to see what is the light before you get up to it. Because I've seen some people make that turn and slam on their brakes, or sometimes just go straight through it.
At Valley View, you're talking about?
Yeah, the one at Valley View, and just, just to be cognizant of that, as they're planting and planting, once these projects are done.
All right, I'll make a note.
It's not an issue in the winter, but.
Thank you.
The Diamond Interchange with Valley View, you could be coming up, you've left target, and then those trees being in the middle block that access until you make the curve to see the light itself.
I know where you're at.
And just to be aware of things like that as they're going. I know they don't make it onto the official plans.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are we ready to go to items recommended for action?
We are ready.
All right, items recommended for action, the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Transportation SGR grant for the 13th Street over Norfolk Southern Railroad Bridge Southwest renovation. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Grant for the 13th Street over Norfolk Southern Railway, Railroad Bridge Southwest renovation, and authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute and file appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
Any discussion from counsel?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, and the manager can just answer it on each one of them when we get to it. My question is, with regards to this construction, when it's time, will there be detours for the, for the bridge? Is it gonna be closed or anything like that?
I'm about to Ross to answer that. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Cause I was reading that, since you gotta do the repairs.
Ms. Moon Reynolds, that's a great question. Yes, that, that bridge will be closed. And so those that are not familiar with the location, that is the bridge just north of Memorial Bridge, right there, Black Dog Salvage. If you blink your eyes, you'll miss it. It was built in the eighties with some pre-tensioned concrete beams. Those have transitioned to what we call poor rating, which has allowed us to apply for the State of Good Repair Grant. That will, will be fully funded. There is no match. Because of, will require closure, we're going to do a heel-to-toe timing immediately following the reopening of the Wessina Bridge on.
That's what I was gonna be my next question, yes.
We're very cognizant of that the Main Street Bridge will carry much more traffic than traditionally does with Wessina being closed for the next few years.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions, discussions, Madam Clerk, please call over.
All right. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation for repairs to the 13th Street over Norfolk Southern Railway, uh, let me read that again. Over Norfolk Southern Railroad Bridge Southwest, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2023, 2024 Capital Projects Fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, call over, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones is out. Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item B is acceptance of Virginia Department of Transportation IJA grant for the Pressinger Road over Murray Run Creek replacement. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Transportation Infrastructure Investment. Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act Grant for the Persinger Road over Murray Run Creek Bridge Replacement and authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute and file appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, yes, this one will also be closed. It's actually a very small bridge, um, so be a relatively, I think, short um timeframe with it, but it it will have to close. The other thing I wanna mention with this item and the next item and the significance of these two grants, so as as the clerk just read, these are from the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and so in both of these grants, there is no local match. So these dollars, which between the two total almost eleven million dollars, um, are federal funds coming directly to uh VDOT then to us um with it and again, no local match associated with either of these.
Good job.
All right, any discussion? Thank you, Bob. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, call over, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez is out. Um, Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Uh, there's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
All right. An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the replacement of the Persinger Road over Murray Run Creek Bridge, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four capital projects fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion? Members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call over.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez is out. Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item C is the acceptance of Virginia Department of Transportation uh L L J A grant for the thirteenth street over Tinker Creek Northeast Superstructure Replacement. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Virginia Department of Transportation Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act Grant for the thirteenth street over Tinker Creek Northeast Bridge Superstructure Replacement and authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute and file appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, any discussion?
And I I do believe this one will also require a closure, um, and then again accompanying detours.
Thank you.
Mayor, uh, Mr. Cowell, how much of um these I I J A funds have we are we receiving in total?
I think these are the first two out of this pot of money. Um, we did receive some of our pedestrian improvements came from another part of one of the other federal um grants and so hopefully these won't be the last of those, but certainly the first two that we've received.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to call over.
All right. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation for superstructure replacement on the thirteenth street over Tinker Creek Bridge, uh, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four capital project fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion, Madam Members of Council? Madam Clerk, please call over.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item D is authorization to negotiate with owners for purchase of property in connection with the West End Stormwater Drainage Improvement Project. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property needed by the city of Roanoke in connection with the West End Stormwater Drainage Improvement Project, authorizing city staff to acquire such real property by negotiation, authorizing the city manager to execute appropriate acquisition documents and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any discussion, Members of Council? Madam Clerk, call over.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Uh, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager at this point.
Thank you. Be very uh brief and I don't ordinarily um do this, but I wanted to comment on two of the items that came up in the public hearing piece of it, one of which I'm sure will be discussed a little bit further, but just wanted to be clear and we've said this, we said this when the Evan Spring Project was approved, that the action that you took was not a development plan, that the development plan comes with the rezoning and all of those items that were identified in the public hearing are requirements associated with development plans and and rezonings regardless of master plans, that that's just a requirement. So I wanted to make sure that that was was clear. Um, and then also on the item regarding the school funding and again, I think you all will talk about this a little bit later, but it was talked about with that affecting teacher pay and I want to be very clear that again, what you all have discussed, um, at least what the working group has discussed, is associated with any um year-end surplus. Those year-end surplus dollars are not available for recurring expenses such as salaries for the city or for um the school. So I want to be clear that that's um uh that's what those those funds don't affect and stuff. So I just wanted to mention those two and that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think it's important to note. Uh, all right, any uh no questions of the city manager? Uh, we're down to the city attorney has no, well, we do have a revised ordinance that we'll get to.
Under item ten, Mr. Mayor. We have three under item ten.
All right, reports of committees, a report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donna Caldwell, director of accounting, is the spokesperson. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth Federal and Private Grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school grant fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any questions or discussions? All right, Madam Clerk, call over, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. A report assured authorities, boards, committees and commissions in which city council serves as a liaison to appointees. Uh, I'm gonna ask council, is there anybody that want to make a comment? Mr. Pretty?
Mayor Lee, incredibly brief, because I know we're short on time. Uh, just that the legislature has wrapped up and I was planning to say more now, but there's not time for it. Um, and so I'm gonna determine whether or not a meeting might be necessary as we get closer to the reconvene session to um possibly review vetoes, um, and see some things, but I'm gonna have to work with the clerk and find a time that's appropriate for everyone here and um we don't even have.
And you're the chair.
Yes, yes, and I'm the as the chair of that committee, so um e- expect more following up, but there's not really time to discuss all that now.
Let me ask, will we be doing, do we usually do a uh have members of the general center come in and give us a report on what went on?
We've we've done a little bit of that. We we typically have had our um the the folks that work for us to actually come in and give kind of an update associated with that. If there was a particular uh piece of legislation that somebody carried locally, we've had that in a few instances, but generally we rely on Adventis um to come in and kind of give us that update.
And Mayor Lee, but I was gonna offer on that while we normally do this um in the winter or fall before we go and inviting our legislators, I know that Delegate Rasul has not been able to attend the past few years. I was gonna work with his office to make sure that he might be available for when we do the review of this past year, since he had a new leadership role in that aspect, but um I don't even know if we'll have the time for this to be publicly done or if this might just have to be something we do in the conference room, but they'll give everyone an opportunity to see him and review those things um in the future.
All right, uh, that's good, huh? Hopefully we'll have somebody from the Senate also here, that's the one that put to me where the where the turf ballot is being done, but uh thank you, Mr. Pretty. Uh, Mr. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All right, we move unfinished business. We have none and uh item ten is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Uh, ten one is an ordinance to amend city code section two dash three oh six Gun Violence Prevention Commission to update the commissioners uh the commission's composition and we do have a revised uh ordinance and uh are you aware of that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Revised ordinance. Could you uh, well?
Move the ordinance?
Yeah, let me.
As revised. Move the ordinance.
Move the revised ordinance.
All right.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you, you can call over on that?
I'll I'll read the ordinance for you.
Okay, thank you.
An ordinance amending and reordaining Division Two Permanent Committees, Article fourteen, Authorities, Boards, Commissions and Committees Generally, Chapter Two, Administration, Section two dash three oh six Gun Violence Prevention Commission, Code of the City of Roanoke, establishing an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, uh, I'll ask attorney, can he elaborate on that?
Just real quickly, what we've done here, uh, the revision is is um put voting in front of members to make it clear that this is a non-person uh commission still, but we've added several individuals to be non-voting members. Chief of Police is a non-voting ex officio member as well as council may appoint at least one and up to two uh liaison members from that can include the mayor as well. So that we can do that as well as council may appoint up to two non-voting youth members under the age of nineteen to be able to serve. So in total, although there may be fourteen members available there, only nine are voting and it will require uh a quorum will need at least five voting members present to have a quorum.
All right, any uh discussion, comments?
Mayor Lee, I just wanna reiterate, um, for the people who are at home, the changes from what you can see online and what we have in front of us is the addition of the word voting after nine in section A when it comes to membership and then that there's a final sentence added that says non-voting members shall not be counted for the purpose of determining a quorum. Otherwise, I did not see.
That's the only change.
Those are the only two changes that um.
And it's more for clarification because under Roberts Rules of Order, of course, non-voting members cannot be used to justify a quorum, but this then follows our language in two dash two eighty-two, which we're about to amend next.
Wonderful, so I have a non-member voting board. Uh, Mayor Lee, I I did wanna bring up up one aspect, um, and I know it's it's not what's directly in front of us. Um, the by making the changes that we're proposing, and I do think we should make these changes, I think that they uh it's a reimagining of the commission in a way that puts the power into the hands of our citizens and makes sure that council serves in a liaison aspect. Uh, I do have slight concern with, you know, when we decided to review this sometime last year, we decided whether or not we wanted to hold the gun violence commission to a a higher standard with how they would spend their money and I just wanted to make sure it was evident to members of council that we'll no longer have any member of council who holds a vote directly on there, but if it's funding that's not under the general fund, they could have the authority to to dictate how that's spent directly. Um, so I don't know if it'd be the preference of anyone here. I I had considered potentially striking out the lead um for annual funding under the general fund under B, section seven, um, so that the gun violence commission would still be empowered to do what it does, uh, but because there's no voting member of council on there, including the mayor, and any of the recommendations would have to come back to us for final approval and that just be something we do as an additional oversight measure. But I that hasn't been discussed amongst this committee recently. I know it was something that we had last year and I just wanted to make sure that it was offered while we were making that change at the moment. So there's any appetite or not.
All right, Members of Council, you all heard that discussion? Any thoughts on that? Comments?
Well, we're just hearing those comments, um, first of all, um, so it's kinda hard to process it and make a decision uh impromptu, but you know, I'm okay with the modification if my colleagues are, but I think it would have probably been more appropriate uh if uh Mr. Pretty had um presented that to us a little bit sooner.
So I'm not saying there has to be a modification that's made, I just wanna make sure that it was made aware to the members of this body, since we're taking away votes on the commission for many council members, that this be an aspect that's brought up. So if this body doesn't wanna make that change to it, I think that it's it's fine as presented. Um, but I just wanna make sure since it was part of many of our discussions last year when we were updating membership, that it wasn't neglected before we voted on this.
But we still have the uh it still should come back to council, there any of the recommendations. That has not changed. Am I mistaken?
Yeah, what what will come back, so based on the conversations that have occurred previously and the way that the ordinance is written currently is if if the council allocates general fund dollars um out of the budget process um to go to the gun violence prevention commission for disperse uh dispersment in whatever way, then those items would come back to you all in the form of some kind of recommendation, similar to what we do with our other boards and commissions. If however, there was a um a grant applied for and that that grant included some kind of dispersment for others, because you all have to appropriate grants and inside that appropriation, it tells you what the scope of the project is and those, that would be the council approval. So if it's a grant-funded item, those any subsequent award of dollars, and I'm saying award of dollars by the commission, but remember the commission's actually not awarding anything, commission makes recommendations, um, those would not come back individually to the council. That's the structure that's operating currently because the idea is you approve the grants and what their purpose is, then the commission actually acts on those and stuff, yeah. Yeah, and I think what Councilmember Pretty is talking about is if you were to hold it to a higher standard, you would require those instances to come back also in the form of a recommendation for council action.
I think that's what Ms. Moon Reynolds had had mentioned before.
I was gonna say that was what I had at the beginning.
But yeah, cuz we thought that was.
Yes, for for uh oversight purposes, yes.
Uh, so.
Hold on a minute, Mr. Pretty. Are you finished?
Yes, sir, I was just responding to.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, we were just responding, yes.
Realized that that was what you had said initially.
I'm gonna say what I think you're going to.
Let me go, I'll come back, Mr. Pretty, let me go.
I'm done, Mayor. I was just responding back to council members.
That's what I expected the city attorney's about to say.
Yeah.
To even make it a little more confusing, but to put on point that council has that opportunity, at the time that the funds are appropriated, council could always say, we want the recommendations to come back before us for final approval.[1684.41] So that can be done on a grant-by-grant basis. If there's a large grant, council says, "I want to see how this money's going to be recommended to be spent, and we want to have final say over that." Council can at that time, without having to amend this, can adopt this.
For each and every grant that comes to us.
Exactly.
But you would do it at the time we approved the grant.
And appropriate the funds, put it within the-
For appropriate appropriations.
Yes.
Before it goes to the bulk of it.
All right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Well, I like that, that seems to be more math than, we're getting into algebra a few minutes ago, what we do, so I like the plain math, that we can do that.
And Mayor Lee, one thing that I thought he was going to mention as well, is that there still is that additional layer of protection that we put in there originally, which says that the commission is to follow regulations and rules that the city manager has put into place, so always, do we still have that current protection, but if we do have funds that come in as a grant that are not in the general fund, we could take that option at that time, but we don't have to change this language, and everything's good moving forward. I just want to make sure that didn't get leapt out of this conversation.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, picking up on the city attorney, that, that would, you know, that, that ability actually exists with any of the grants that you receive, so for example, a year or so ago, when the police department actually received a grant that involved some automatic license plate reading, councilmember Pretty had asked as a, if you will, a condition of the approval and the appropriation of that grant, that the council be provided the, the policy that will be used in the implementation of those kinds of things. So you actually, just to be clear, you all have the ability, anytime that we bring a grant forward for appropriation, if there are some additional requirements or steps you want followed, you have the opportunity to do that as we, as we actually implement on those grants.
Thank you.
All right. So no amendments being offered is what I'm making clear.
All right, so now we move down to-
We got to call a roll, yes.
Call a roll.
Yeah, okay. Now, when we will go to the next ordinance about the mayor's position, that's next.
That's next.
We'll talk about that. All right, Madam Clerk, call a roll on this, please.
Ms. Moon is out of seat, and Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and it's been approved. I hope everybody, when people take these breaks right before we get ready to vote, I get kind of uncomfortable on that. I mean, gee, we out here and just walk out, even though we do have a quorum, I think it's just, you know, people need to know, because you, you'll be following this business on your vote, not all of the things you say, what you vote, and people walk out before we, we vote on issues. That's a point of contention with me, but I don't know how far that goes, but we'll go on. All right, Madam Clerk, did you get the results to everybody on that?
Yes, I did.
All right, so the ordinance-
We're next for the ordinance.
Ordinance is, is approved.
Yes.
All right. All right, item two is an ordinance to amend city code section 2 dash 282, mayor as ex-officio member of committees, to remove the mayor as an ex-officio member to the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right.
All right.
I think everybody should be a part of this, we've always talked about all the council members should be a part, but we'll, we'll go ahead, we got a full quorum.
You don't have to wait.
Pardon me?
We can wait until I come back.
Are you sure?
Well, Mayor Lee, I just have a question.
Okay. Well, we, we moved and sucking it, right?
Yes.
And so what we're going to do in that discussion, so go ahead.
As, as long as you plan on voting for it, then we can vote on it now. Otherwise, we'll have to do it at two separate meetings.
Okay.
Oh, well, okay, all right.
We're holding up the vote, folks, they're about to go out on these breaks, you know. All right. Okay, Madam Clerk.
I will read the ordinance. An ordinance amending and re-erdaining Division One Generally, Article 14, Authorities, Boards, Commissions, and Committees Generally, Chapter Two, Administration, Section 2 dash 282, Mayor as Ex-Officio Member of Committees, Code of the City of Roanoke, establishing an effective date and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any, any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk.
All right, Ms. Moon is out. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. An ordinance to amend city code section, that's, item three is an ordinance to amend city code section 22.3 dash 78, Administration and Investment to Update the Composition of the Defined Contribution Board. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending and re-erdaining Section 22.3 dash 78, Administration and Investment, Article 14, Defined Contribution Plan, Chapter 22.3, Pensions and Retirement, Code of the City of Roanoke as amended, Providing for an Effective Date and Dispensing with a Second Reading by Title of this Ordinance.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, I just, I just ask if the, if someone could explain all the changes, and, yes, please.
What this is attempting to do is to make sure that we put it in a way such that it reflects the structure in the city manager's office as well as finance department's office to allow the appointment of those directors, the city manager, as well as their designees to create a, a defined contribution board to address the issues needed by Harold in finance department. So this just gives a little bit of flexibility, because it's not just the city manager, he gets a designee, and he also gets to appoint a designee, as well as the, the finance director gets to be there and have a designated person, and then the HR director. So that'll be the five members.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
All right, Ms. Moon is out, Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. All right, motion to miscellaneous business by members of mayor or members of council. The floor is open.
Mayor Lee, very quickly alluded to earlier, if the city attorney could give us any update on the four-foot safety regulations as it relates to medians, and where do we happen to be on that, or if you don't have an answer now, we can hold that for a second.
I don't have an answer on the enforcement aspect, I'd have to get together with the police chief on that. I do understand, just, I, I don't have statistics, but anecdotally, I understand that it has been of help.
And, okay, so by enforcement, I was referring to court, but yes, okay.
Right, I'll get the statistical data, but I understand, it's, it's been a tool that they've been able to use, not necessarily from a standpoint of issuing tickets, but from a standpoint of eliminating the problem.
All right, well, okay, thank you.
Any, any other comments?
All right, yes, just really briefly, last year, or last year, excuse me, last week, I was in Washington DC for the NLC Congressional City Committee, or City Conventions, excuse me, where we learned, I learned a lot about workforce development, how we can find federal funding for homelessness, and the innovation economy, which we're trying to push here in our area, and also spent time on Capitol Hill lobbying our representative, Mr. Klein, about the access, the ACP, the Accessible Communications Plan, or Program?
Affordability Connectivity Program.
There we go. I can remember all these acronyms, which is going to be coming up for reauthorization and might also kick 23 million people off of the internet, so we want to make sure that that's going through. Also spoke with him about low-income housing tax credits and expanding that program so that hopefully more of our programs that, are, some of our projects that have been applying for those and not getting funding will hopefully get some in the future. It was a really great convention, we got to meet a lot of folks from all over the country and learn what they're doing in their areas, and bringing that education and information back here to council and to the city. So thank you for everyone who, for allowing me to go on this trip, and I think it was really beneficial for us.
Well, thank you for that report. Anybody else? All right, vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council, we have none at this time, and before recess, let me just say that I'd like for the council, and these are my colleagues, that when we're about to vote on the issue[1734.11]